Everyone, I have a few people that are signed in on multiple devices. Can everyone please make sure that you're only signed on from one device? All right, two more minutes, everyone, and we'll get going. All right. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the March 19th, 2021 virtual meeting of the zoning board of appeals. My name is Timmy Knudsen. My pronouns are he/him/his, and I'm the chairman of the ZDA. As we ease into the spring and the hopeful fall of a pandemic, I urge everyone out there who is eligible to receive the COVID-19 vaccine to do so. We all need to work together to shut this thing down. Only then will we be able to meet as the ZDA together in person. I also want to extend a very heartfelt, happy belated birthday to the love that we all share, the city of Chicago. 184 years ago, on March 4th, Chicago was incorporated as a city with a population of around just 4,000 people. So much has changed since then and continues to change in this dynamic city of ours. Without further ado, first, I'd like to take judicial notice of the fact that on March 5th, 2021, the governor of the state of Illinois signed a disaster proclamation, declaring all counties of the state of Illinois a disaster area due to the COVID-19 public health emergency. This disaster proclamation is in effect until April 5th, 2021. Thus, Section 71 of the Open Meetings Act has been met. Second, I'm making a determination pursuant to Section 72 of the Open Meetings Act that an in-person meeting of the board is not practical or prudent. Similarly, I am also making a determination pursuant to Section 7E5 that because of the disaster declared by the governor, it is unfeasible for at least one member of the zoning board of appeals or its chief administrative officer or its chief legal officer to be physically present at the meeting place inasmuch as there is no physical meeting place. Third, this meeting will operate under the emergency rules governing the conduct of remote public board meetings and provisions for remote public participation promulgated by me and my predecessor, which are posted to the board's website. I encourage everyone who frequently appears before the board to familiarize yourselves with these emergency rules, especially my recent January 26, 2021 updates, as we do not know how long the COVID-19 public health emergency will last. In line with these emergency rules, today's meeting of the zoning board of appeals is a virtual meeting that is being simulcast to the general public via live streaming. It is also being recorded. We've established these virtual hearings in keeping with the governor, the general assembly, the mayor, and city council's goal to continue government functions while maintaining transparency and public safety. But there are technical limitations to this format that we must collectively manage, particularly with respect to the presentation of new evidence during a hearing, the ability for applicants and objectors to resolve objections or amend proposals during this hearing, and the participation of large numbers of people. As a result, any material to be presented to the board, whether by applicants or members of the public, was required to be submitted in advance of the meeting. And in addition, everyone wishing to testify at today's hearing, whether on behalf of an applicant or in opposition, was required to register before today's meeting. For those who do not regularly appear before the board, I will go over a few things for those participating. Number one, we are operating under the emergency rules. So for all applicants, objectors, and their attorneys, if you do not send us your exhibits by the cutoff date and time, you will not be able to reference them. Number two, all participants will be listed as attendees within the Zoom meeting until your matter is called. At that time, we will transfer you to its panelists. There will be a short switch over where you will lose the feed, so do not be surprised by that. Number three, once you are set as a panelist, please present your case. Board staff will be presenting the PowerPoint exhibits for everyone as we normally do, so you will not need to manage sharing your screen. Number four, please be mindful of background noise, and please mute yourself when you are not speaking at all times, including right now. Number five, in addition, please note that we have a court reporter preparing our record. So it is very important that two people do not speak at the same time. You might see me muting someone if that happens. Number six, if you are an active participant in this meeting, please do not watch the live stream. This will cause audio interference. Let me repeat that. If you are an active participant in this meeting, please do not watch the live stream in tandem. Number seven, please make sure you identify yourself while you are speaking. This goes for attorneys, applicants, members of the public, and board commissioners. Since all of us are remote, we and our court reporters cannot always see who is talking at any given time. I will also be administering oaths for each witness individually to accommodate for this. Number eight, if an applicant or anyone in opposition to the application has any technical issues presenting their case and is unable to proceed, we will attempt to continue the matter until the end of the call to create time to resolve these issues. If unsuccessful, we will continue the matter until a subsequent meeting. Number nine, after your matter matters are concluded, please leave the Zoom meeting. If you are interested in continuing to watch our meeting, which I hope you are, I encourage you to watch the live stream, which is accessible from our website. Fourth, I'd like to let everyone know, especially those that frequently appear before the board, that we've made changes to the proposed finding-of-fact forms and cannabis community meeting affidavits. As a relatively new chairman, I have the goal of making the board more efficient and modern where appropriate. So these changes will be the first of more to come. The revised forms are available on the board's website, and we expect these revised forms to be used going forward. Some of the changes to the forms are just to streamline. For instance, now that the forms are due to the board earlier in the process, you don't know your calendar number or hearing date at the time they're submitted, so we've removed those sections. We've also added some lines into our cannabis findings of fact forms that reference our COVID supplemental community meeting rule. The bigger changes are as follows. The forms are now gender neutral, as are the form affidavits. However, please make sure that you continue to have individuals fill out the form affidavits. For variations, we've created an economic analysis form that developers or their attorneys need to fill out. As this board often asks questions on economic analysis, this will streamline the way it's presented. Finally, for cannabis leading affidavits, we've clarified that we require both the notice of publication and the certificate of publication. This means we want both a copy of the published notice and the certificate of publication of the notice from the newspaper. Previously, we just stated that we wanted proof of publication, which allowed to some of you providing various items. But what we want is the actual certificate of publication, that is, the affidavit from the newspaper stating that it was published. Fifth, I'd also like to let everyone know that I will soon be updating my urgency rules. These will be posted to the board's website, and we will be using the updated version going forward. Like the new proposed finding-of-fact forms, the changes are mostly to streamline. The bigger changes are, again, gender-neutral language. Second, an emphasis on the fact that as a quasi-judicial body, the board prefers live testimony from members of the public. Though, of course, we will, as we historically have done, continue to accept written comments from members of the public. And there will be no changes to the deadlines. Let me repeat that. There will be no changes to the current deadlines. With that, I'd like to call this virtual meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order. I will take a roll call to establish quorum. Commissioners, after I call your name and you state that you are present, please verify that you can both hear and see me. Commissioner Saul.
Present, I can hear and see you.
Great. Commissioner Sanchez.
Present, I can hear and see you.
Commissioner Esposito.
Present, I can hear and see you.
Commissioner Toya.
Present, and I can hear and see you.
Great, and I am present, so quorum is established. The meeting of the February 19th, 2021 meeting have been distributed. Unless there are corrections, I move that we approve these minutes as distributed. Commissioner Toya, seconds. Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
The minutes have been approved as distributed. I moved it to approve today's agenda. Commissioner Toya, seconds. Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I mean, yes, today's agenda has been approved. Now, I'm going to take any continuances and withdrawals. I understand that we have several. First, I'll call the ones that I have an educated guess are coming, and everyone else can get organized to ask. So is anyone available to speak for calendar number 64-20-S?
Chairman, this is Victor Risa with the zoning board. We received notification from the attorney for that matter that the applicant had received their license, so they no longer needed to request the extension.
Okay, great. Okay, so calendar number 64-20-S is withdrawn. Okay, is anyone here for calendar numbers 107-21-S through 110-21-Z?
Good morning, Chairman. This is Sarah Barnes. Good morning. Good morning, commissioners as well. I am the attorney of record for these matters, so I am present.
Okay, great. Okay, go ahead.
Chairman, we also have Alderwoman Rodriguez on as well.
Got it. I understand some continuances being requested, but I'm not sure by who.
Sorry, this is Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. This is my first time at the board, so I am not sure if I need to speak up first about the continuance or if the representative for the developer speaks.
Good morning. Good morning, Alderwoman. First off, and if it's your first time to the board, we welcome you.
Thank you.
You can go ahead and speak, and then if there's a representative on, we'll get them as well.
Okay, so we are requesting a continuance for this project. Our office did not hear from the developer about why the variance is necessary or what the hardship would be for them if they don't get the variance. We have not seen materials or proof that there are mitigating measures taken to reduce the impact this construction will have on the surrounding properties. And if these exist, we would like to be able to review these documents with a reasonable amount of time. We have a community zoning process that helps us understand better potential issues or impact on surrounding properties and community, and we appreciate engagement with the process, but we haven't been able to do that with this project yet. And we have received a lot of concern from neighbors in the surrounding area. So we would like to get a continuance for this project for those reasons.
Okay. Okay, and Councilor Barnes, do you want to address that in any way?
Sure. Good morning again, Commissioner Sarah Barnes, for the record. And we have provided the Alderwoman's office with a copy of the application findings of fact. As well, per the request of the Alderwoman's office, we have sent a second public notice to all residents and property owners within 750 feet of the subject property. That was actually sent out early last week, which contained a detailed summary of the project, similar to what we have in our findings of fact. My office hasn't received any responses to that second public notice or even the first public notice that was sent out in October, actually. But nonetheless, we are very happy to continue to work with Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez and engage with the community further regarding this project. We definitely want it to be a collaborative project and a benefit for the community. So we are not objecting to the continuance, and we will continue to provide the Alderwoman's office with sufficient documents, materials, and, again, otherwise engaged with the community. The only thing I would request in return, Mr. Chairman, there is a very, very, very hard, drop-dead deadline for the financing for this project, which is April 19th. As such, if we cannot commence with the hearing in April, which would be April 16th, I believe, then this case completely dies and the project. I would ask that we continue at one month, if that's okay.
Yeah, and that will be all good on our end. Is anyone, just so I give everyone a chance, is anyone present from the applicant that wants to speak as well? Or else I think we can just go ahead and continue this one month.
We don't have any other representatives here today because, again, we have no objection to it.
Okay, then let's just continue to April 16, 2021. So for the record, that's calendar numbers 107-21-S through 110-21-Z. So there's a 107, a 108, a 109, and a 110. And these matters will be continued one month to April 16, 2021.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, and Alderwoman.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Alderwoman. Okay, next on my list is calendar number 114-21-S.
Chairman, Nick Fatikas. Can you hear me?
Hey, Nick. Yep, I can hear you.
Great, thank you. Yes, my office represents the owner and applicant in 114-21-S. We were advised by staff at the Department of Planning and Development that additional edits were needed and details were needed to our plan set. So if we could have a one-month continuance, it should allow us to reconcile or resolve any outstanding issues so the project can move forward.
Yep. Yeah, I'm just confirming with the calendar counselor before I give away a bunch of April continuances. Okay, yeah, we're good on this matter for April 16, 2021. So again, calendar number 114-21-S will be continued to our next meeting, April 16, 2021.
Mr. Chairman?
Alderman Burnett, how are you?
Hey, man, what's happening? You letting the hair grow on your face?
You can tell me if you like it or not. No.
Hey, can you tell me the address of that?
Yeah, that is...
Or should I say point of information?
Yeah, that one's 3947 South Hesey, so that's the 12th floor.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Alderman. Okay, next on my list is calendar number 33-21-S. I believe, is Paul Colpak on? I believe he's... Counselor on this matter?
Chairman, this is Victor with the Department of Planning and Development again. I don't see the attorney on, but I know they were still having site plan matters that they needed to address.
Okay. It may just be that, yeah, no one showed up to ask for continuance. So Victor, if we have...
I do have someone here, though. Hold on one second.
Okay.
Louis Skyegles? Were you here for this matter? Louis, you have to unmute yourself. You're here for this matter.
What?
Yes.
Yes.
Um.
Mr. Paul is trying to connect right now. He said he's having problems connecting.
Good. Okay, so meantime, let's take any other continuances that we might not know about. So if you're here to continue to ask for a continuance or a withdrawal, please do so right now.
Chairman, this is Victor Risa again. Page eight, number 127-21-S, 3040 West 111th Street. The attorney is Michael Yip. The department is asking for a one-month continuance. They are still working on site plan issues, and he is here. I'm going to promote him now.
Great, thank you.
Go ahead, Michael.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Michael Yip, on behalf of CIBC. I don't know if you can hear me now.
Yep, Michael, we can hear you. Thank you.
Good evening. I mean, good morning. Yesterday evening, I received an email from Mr. Risa and Nancy, Nancy from the City's Department requesting additional time to review the resubmission regarding some of the landscaping issues for the driveway. Mr. Risa said that they'd be requesting a one-month extension, which we have no objection to.
Okay. Okay, great. If everyone's agreed, we can go ahead and continue this. So again, this was matter 127-21-S at 3040 West 111th Street, and we'll be hearing this at our next meeting, which is April 16, 2021.
Great, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Okay, I think, I don't know if Paul Colpak was able to sign in yet.
He hasn't yet. He's working on it.
Chairman?
Yep.
This is Paul Colpak.
Hi, Paul.
Hi, I'm sorry. I just tried to get Victor. I've been watching this, and I can't get in. Good morning, everyone. Regarding the first matter, on page eight, 3321-S, property of 3501 Roosevelt Road, we are requesting a continuance. We have a Zoom meeting scheduled with the Alderman, Department of Planning, CDOT, Dunkin' Donuts, and the client scheduled for mid-next week. We're trying to work out a solution to this matter so it can go forward. So we respectfully request a continuance. I believe I heard you say that it was granted.
Yes, yeah, I think I did grant it. If I didn't, I'll make it official here, but it sounds like you'll be ready next month.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, great. Then we're going to give one-month continuance. That's calendar number 33-21-S. And we'll be seeing everyone for that matter on April 16, 2021.
Thank you very, very much.
Yep, yep, thank you.
Chairman, we have an objector on case number 60. I'm going to promote him right now. And we also have Charlotte Huffman requesting a continuance as well for the matter on Carol.
Okay, whoever's ready first. Is Charlotte ready?
She's promoted.
Great.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Charlotte Huffman, on behalf of the applicant Cannabie Growth. This is on calendar numbers 3721-S and 38-21-S. We had a meeting yesterday with staff from DPD and the Department of Public Health. It was a productive meeting, but we just need a little more time to incorporate what was discussed at that meeting into our plans, so we're requesting a continuance.
Okay, this has been on our books for a few months. So would you, two months? Or do you think next month is a feasible date?
I think next month is a feasible date.
Okay, okay, because we, of course, would love to address it. So let's give it a one-month continuance. If it's continued again, we'll probably start giving two months. let's give it a one-month continuance. Um, if it's continued again, we'll probably start giving two months.
Okay.
Okay, so this again is uh calendar numbers 37-21-S and 38-21-S, and we will hear these um, April 16th, 2021.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I know we have an objector for calendar number 60-21-Z.
Hi, my name is John Boska. I'm with Neighbors of River West. Um, we're uh, we're here because of, as you just mentioned, 6021-Z. And that'd be 451 to 57 North Elizabeth. Um, with the materials that have been presented um from Monday, uh, there's been significant progress with the applicant. However, we have yet to come to a full agreement. And so we're requesting a continuance so that we would be able to resolve the issues that we've got. Uh, there's been a lot of work that's been done this week, but we still need additional time in order to complete a plan of operation for what what they're looking to do.
Okay, is uh, is attorney on this matter on the line?
Yeah, this is Nick Fatikas again for the record on behalf of the applicant and property owner. Uh, unfortunately, I I do agree with Mr. Boska that we've made a ton of progress um on on a number of conditions for the operations of the property. However, we're not agreeing to a second continuance. If you recall, the uh, the objectors obtained the continuance last month. Again, we're willing in good faith to continue to work with them. But the operational restrictions do not relate directly to the uh requested zoning relief, the setbacks for the building. And for that reason, we're in a position to move forward.
Okay, and without getting on the, in the facts of the case too much, a bulk of our objections related to alley access. And I understand that the alley access is, there's some resolution there.
Yeah, so Alderman Burnett and uh had had issued a position saying that he was not going to support alley access. We've since amended our plan, and the plan that's being presented to the zoning board today does not involve alley access. We're now exclusively using ingress and egress from the front of the property. We'll explain it in much greater detail during our presentation, but that issue is no longer an issue um for for our application.
Okay, um, and after Alderman, Alderman Burnett, just because I know we have you on, um, can you speak to this request for continuance?
Well, um, I don't know exactly what they're still trying to work out. But as a good neighbor, I think it'd be good if they can do so. I think that they did come a long way um in 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 getting things together, and I appreciate it. I appreciate the uh applicant's patience. Uh, I think that they can continue on with their plans uh while uh still working out a few things. Um, I don't know, maybe, maybe we should ask uh, um, the Neighbors of River West, which is the organization uh that that I work very closely with. Uh, what are, what are the um, the pending issues that they have? Maybe, I don't know if you wanted to, um, if you want to try to do anything right now. But it seemed like, I don't know how much they have still in place, I'm not sure. I know the alley was the biggest issue that they brought to me, and uh we got a resolution on that, which is great. So uh, I don't know what the other things are, maybe they could share that with us.
Yeah, and I, so that, that's right. And I think, John, so my question for you is, we like to, we like to hear um matters, especially when there's been compromise met. Um, I get that your objection sounds a little bit like a timing, like a digestion of information um request. Uh, you're gonna be the last matter today. Could you, could you, is there any, depending on what's outstanding, because I don't know what there is outstanding. Is there um, is there any chance for some of that today and hearing it today?
So, so fortunately or unfortunately, however you want to look at it, um, we have a lot of history, a lot of time invested with the applicant. And so, so it originally started off as a zoning change, and things did not progress for them at that level. We then went on and they came back with a uh, a way to adjust their operation and address it through um zoning variances. All, all of which we understand. However, what we're looking for is a memorialization and being able to have in writing exactly what is, what is being proposed, what we agreed to, and how the operation will affect the neighbors around there. Yes, uh, the group has made a concession of not using the back alley, which, again, that's a lot of progress right there. However, there are a few other things that we believe that we can get taken care of very quickly, except we need them memorialized and in writing from the applicant, only because of the history that we have with them. And it's not Nick. Nick has done, we know Nick, worked with Nick all along, we appreciate it. But the applicant, we need to have in writing memorialized as to what that operation is gonna look like and how it will affect the other properties that are around it. Traffic issues, uh, access in and out of the property, how that gets handled, who handles that. There's other uses that have ingress, egress, and use the street as part of their business. And those are things that we would like to have memorialized.
Yeah, so Nick, my, my inclination, just because it's a good process, since a lot has changed this week, is to make a strict one-month continuance. This will go no matter what next month. But that being said, counselor, I I won't, of course, give you your time to.
I I really would ask you to respectfully reconsider that. Ever, and I agree with John, we've made a ton of progress on the operations. But we're focused now on the operations and the specific use, which are not before the zoning board. The zoning board today is considering setbacks on our lot triggered by a neighboring lot. Again, I don't want to get into those specifics right now, it's inappropriate. However, the focus of, the purpose of the continuance would be to lock in operational commitments that deal with the, the, the business that would go in the building, but not the building. And we're not asking, we're not before the board today seeking a special use, we're seeking variations. The special use, I'm sorry, the uh use that's proposed is 100% permitted in the underlying M2-2 district. So whether it happens today or a year, a year from now, when the building gets delivered, there'll be plenty of time for us to negotiate with the neighbors, with the aldermen. Certain restrictions or a plan of operation or a memorandum of understanding, any one of those agreements. Again, what we're talking about and the reason for the neighbor's delay is not germane and does not directly relate to the request for variation, and ask you to consider that before making a final decision about the continuance today.
Yeah, so hmm, it's interesting, right? Because without, without being able to build the building, you can't have the use, um. You know, I guess, John, what I'd ask you is, because I don't know these talks that have been had in the background. Are, are you, is your group clear on the concessions made by the applicant as they relate to the variation? Today, we're not going to be getting into operations. I get that eventually operations will, will come up for this property. But I really want to focus in what the root of of the objector's issue was, which was the alley access.
So once again, um, you know, to Nick's point, uh, those issues, um, again, because of the history that we have with this applicant. Again, I'm, we're basing this on the history that we have with this applicant that what, that if, if things move forward and the variances and everything else that are approved as they show up today and as they've been presented today, then we lose all leverage. We, we have, we have no recourse other than the applicant saying, hey, we, we got what we wanted for, too bad, so sad. So it's a matter of being able to negotiate and be able to get to a position with them where hey, they realize that in order for this to work, all these matters need to be addressed. We're working on it, we're going toward that, but if the variances happen, we lose any um negotiating ability whatsoever.
Chairman, if I could again briefly respond. I, I absolutely defer to the, the zoning board um on, on matters such as this. I, I don't believe the zoning board is in a position to give one party a le, a leveraged position in negotiating with another. A, again, if we were talking about operations of a special use, a specific use that requires special use in the underlying zoning, 100% agree. It, it, that's part of the process. We're talking about the building today. And almost every item other than the alley access that we're trying or attempting to negotiate relates to operations. And again, until the building gets built, there can be no operation. We have uh probably at least a calendar year to work through the process.
Got it. Okay, so what, what we're gonna do here, just because I know, I, I'm vaguely aware of the kind of back and forth between the applicant and the um, the community group, and I do understand why they want certain things memorialized because of how that's gone. We're gonna be granting a one-month continuance. Um, and it will be heard on April 16th. Um, so again, this is calendar number 60-21-Z, it will be continued one month on April 16th, 2021.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yep, thanks, John.
Thank you.
Okay, any other requests for continuance? All right, it sounds like we have everybody. Last, uh, last chance, any additional requests for continuances? Okay, sounds like none. Um, let's get started on our regular matters. Um, I'm gonna be calling matter eight-21 or eight-20-S first, which is at 4630 West Augusta Boulevard. As the applicant gets situated, I'm gonna go ahead and read um the DPD recommendation. If I can find it.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Morning. One second, I'm just trying to find this DPD recommendation. I understand this is a special use extension, right?
That is correct, Your Honor. This is Dean T. Marigus on behalf of the app, of the applicant. On the attorney record.
Great, okay, okay, so sounds like we don't have a DPD recommendation on this special use because it's an extension. Uh, so you can go ahead and uh present your case.
Thank you very much. Briefly, my name is Dean T. Marigus of the Law Firm of Marigus and Marigus here in Chicago. We've been representing Ruben Salgado, the applicant, for many years. He is in Mexico and he's on the phone. I talked to him about it 40 minutes ago and he called in. Uh, this is a simple matter, Your, Your Honor, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is a matter that was already approved, and due to COVID, we've had serious problems in construction, uh, work, uh, all types of problems in moving forward to get the license. So we ask a continuance here of six months to continue moving forward to get this project done. It was approved by Alderman Mits in, when we first approved it last year. Uh, I have a letter from Alderman Mits, which unfortunately was sent yesterday. Uh, we sent it to Victor, but he properly stated that we couldn't enter it into the record. But I'll ask dispensation, if I could, of the board, if they would enter the letter of support for Alderman Mits. This is a simple matter. We, we gladly will answer any questions.
Great, yeah, we can, we can enter it in, Dean, and, and sorry, because when, when you say continuance, I'm triggered because we just want continuances, so.
I'm sorry, extension, extension, I'm sorry.
Okay, great. Um, yeah, so do you want to, is that a rec, a letter you want to read?
Uh, yes, uh, it was uh to, to you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, letter of support for continuance, our extension of the City of Chicago Zoning Board of Appeals, special use for 4630 West Augusta. Case number eight 20-S. Dear Chairman Knutson, I would like to inform you of my support for the content, uh, extension of the special use to be granted to Ruben Salgado, owner and applicant for a banquet hall located in my ward. Mr. Salgado has met with the op, with the community organization, our police commander, and received their support for this new establishment. It will afford my residents the convenience of having a banquet hall close to their homes for their baptisms, weddings, and other family events. I will also create, it would also create jobs and will be an asset to the community in my ward. I will gladly discuss this matter with you. Thank you for your consideration in this matter. Signed, Emma Mits, Alderman of the 37th Ward.
And the applicant is on the line, correct?
Yes, I talked, he is in Mexico. Uh, he still has COVID issues there, and he is on the line.
Yeah, can you introduce him and just get him on our record? And also, we'll just want to hear a reminder of some background of what type of banquets are being run, how it's been going so far, um, and the like.
Sure, I talked to him earlier, he should be on the line, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I'm sorry, what's the name again?
Ruben Salgado. Do we have him on the line? If not, Mr. Chairman, I will call him on my cellphone and he can testify through that.
Okay, great, yep, that might be required, just because we've gotta got, have the applicant on.
Okay, I will, I'm calling him right now. Ruben, hang on, I've got you on with the chairman now. I'm gonna ask you some questions. He wants to know what type of banquets do we have?
And first, um, or Dean, can we just get him sworn in really quick?
Okay, Ruben, just relax, listen to me. You raise your right hand and they're gonna swear you in so that you tell the truth, okay? Hang on.
Yes.
Hey, Ruben, hey, will you please state your name and address for our record?
State your name and address.
Yes, Ruben Salgado. 4630 West Augusta Boulevard, Chicago, Illinois, 603, 501.
Thank you, sir. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Great, okay, go right ahead.
Okay, Ruben, what type of banquets would we be talking about at your new facility?
Uh, we have a, a wedding, a kilian, a baptism, uh, any special event.
Did you hear that, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, no, we heard it. And um, great, thank you, Ruben. And how have the events been going so far? I know you've been in operation.
No, Mr. Chairman, we have not been in operation.
Ah, sorry, this is an extension.
Right, we're an extension because we're, once we get this extension, we'll be in process of getting the liquor, the licenses for the establishment.
Okay, so a question that might actually even be more for counselor. I noticed you're, you're applying for a six-month extension um when you could apply for a 12-month extension. Does that indicate that you're almost ready?
Uh, no, in fact, I apologize. I thought six months was the total duration. Can we amend the record for a 12-month extension? I would be very appreciative of that, because you don't know how long this COVID matter is going to detain us.
Yeah, let me, let me check.
I apologize for that.
No, no worries, I'm just gonna, gonna check with our lawyers before I get something wrong. Yep, we're happy, we're happy to amend that. We've already heard this case and the set of facts, and COVID is a extenuating circumstance. So um, so this extension uh will now be, uh, if granted, for 12 months.
Thank you, sir, very much.
Okay, like I said, we've, we've heard this on the facts already. Uh, but I want to open up. But I want to open up any questions to the board. Okay, I hear none. So, Mr. Salgado, thank you for getting on the line and we'll take this extension under consideration.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Have a great day.
Yeah, thanks, Dean. Good. All right, now moving into regular call. Let's go to calendar number 92-21-Z at 11044 South Avenue F. Mr. Valdivia, let me know when you're on the line.
Hello?
Hi, is this Saul Valdivia?
Yes.
Great, hi Saul. Yeah, we can hear you, we can hear you. Are you, you're representing yourself in this matter, correct?
Yes, and with me will be my consultant, Mr. Kareem Musawi, as an expert witness. Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Let me get you sworn in really quick. So also, if you could please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, my name is Saul Valdivia and my address is 11044 South Avenue F.
Great, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Perfect, go right ahead. What brings you here today?
Asking for a variance. I'm the owner of the property along with my, it's a home I share with my wife. The subject, the address is owned as RS-3. My lot measures 30 feet by 123 feet for a total lot size of 3,716 square feet. My goal with this application is to establish a new two-car garage in the basement or lower level at the rear of my home so that we can park our vehicles on our property and keep some open space in the rear yard. My street's relatively narrow, 33 feet wide instead of the regular 60 feet width that you will find on an average street in Chicago. This presents a challenge for some drivers trying to navigate through the block and especially during winter time when snow and ice is on the street. We've experienced mirrors being hit and collision damage while parking. And before you today, seeking approval for a variation, application number 9221-C for the subject property. Should you approve my application, the variation will allow me to build a new two-story addition on the rear of my home with a garage with two enclosed parking spaces on the lower level and a family room over the garage. I am seeking a variation to one, reduce the rear setback from 34.68 feet to 20.19 feet for a proposed rear two-story addition with an attached two-car garage. I will replace my current deck with a deck over the new addition. This will allow me to retain some rear yard open space on the ground. And because the alley adjacent to my house is a T alley, this is a lot, this design will allow clearer sightline where my neighbors' vehicles are traversing the alley to get to their garage. Mr. Chairman, members of board, I've waited a long time to get this application before you and we would please try and answer any questions you may have. Want to thank you and the board for allowing me to present this application. And I want to thank the Office of Zoning Administration and Zoning Board Appeal Staff for their efforts in assisting me in the work necessary to get this application before this board in these difficult times. We ask that you approve our variation application as presented. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Mr. Valdivia. And do you want to, do you want to get your witness on?
Yes.
Ask any questions of him?
I think Mr. Kareem Musawi is present here. I don't, I don't know if the board has any questions for us or...
Maybe, maybe we can start questions and see, but I'm going to get Mr. Musawi sworn in since he's a witness on this one. So Kareem, will you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure, Kareem Musawi. My address is 221 North of South Street, Chicago.
Great, did you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great, thank you. So unless, unless Kareem, you want to say something now, we'll just move to questions.
You know, I believe Mr. Valdivia has presented the case pretty much what it is, pretty much what it is. It's a difficult situation on that narrow street and this proposed garage would alleviate that problem that he's having.
Okay, great. Okay. Mr. Valdivia, I know your lot is a little bit unique, but I'm wondering if you could give us an overview of neighboring properties and like the surrounding blocks? And is this a typical setup? Are there other houses with this setup in your vicinity?
There are other houses, all the houses on the block are similar. They all have garages, not necessarily attached garage, but they do all have garages.
Okay. Okay, and is your reasoning for not doing a detached garage, is it zoning related?
For the detached garage, just to keep it closer to the house so that the alley is still open for, because there's a lot of traffic in that alley, people turning.
Okay. Did you consider doing a detached garage in this way?
To consider doing a detached garage, I would have to do it. There would be some limitations as to that corner where the cars turn to, at the T. And have to be smaller and then more inside. Well, I wouldn't know if I would be able to do a two-car garage and still have a yard.
Okay. Okay, questions from the board as I'm, as I'm thinking of some?
Mr. Valdivia, I have a question, Commissioner Sanchez. The property that's on the other side of the alley where that T is, does that property have a detached garage or a connected garage?
It has a detached garage, single car.
May we see the, this is Commissioner Esposito, may we see the aerial photograph once again? Thank you. Commissioner Sanchez, have you completed your question?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. This is Commissioner Esposito. I have two questions. Will you be enclosing the rear yard with a fence?
The rear yard, yes.
So wouldn't that also block views of drivers in a way that a garage might?
But the fence is angled off at that corner.
Okay, that's my second question. I noticed that in the aerial photograph here. Why is your corner clipped? Can you describe that condition in your yard, please?
It's angled off because when cars turn there, they come real close. They've already hit, and the snow, when it's snow back in the alley, they've already kind of hit the backyard or that corner edge because cars turn real close. It's a very narrow alley and there's not a, like if trucks go back behind or drive through there, their turns are very narrow.
So as it's currently paved, that portion of alley pavement is in your property?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Valdivia, one question here. We've got to show, we've got to like consider some type of hardship that happens if we don't grant this variation. Can you, can you discuss what you view as the hardship to the property if this variation is not, is not approved? We're just trying to see through that, you know, you could potentially put some form of a garage in a detached manner that's in line with city, you know, the cityscape.
Yes. You asked a question of Mr. Chairman?
Oh, Kareem, either way, I was asking it of Mr. Valdivia, but if we could get your, your take, that would be helpful as well.
Well, there are two things. First of all, the reason for him having to establish a garage is the narrowness of the street itself. He has 33-foot wide street and looking at the presented area, you see that the street narrows and there's a very, very narrow passage between the park car. Then, and to Mr. Garcia, Commissioner Garcia's point, the neighbor to the north has a detached garage and their garage doors are also onto the alley facing Mr. Valdivia's property. And so moving his property, moving his garage to a different area of the alley gives them both more maneuverability space for parking, ingress and egress and for other people coming through the alley.
This is Commissioner Esposito again. Have you seen damage by vehicles such as trash removal in the alley? On neighboring garages? I'm curious why that corner is clipped and why you have to take on the responsibility of sacrificing part of your yard for alley use? So maybe if you could talk a little bit about that?
As far as the garbage cans being hit or that, every time, there's like a, the road narrows down, so there's always like, every time it rains and floods in back there, the garbage cans are always being moved around. They've have the alley, the garage right behind, next to, behind my house is like very close to mine. So if I put the two garbage cans and cars coming out, there's not a lot of room to to maneuver to be able to come out the garage. I put that, that clip there just because I've had, hit that, that corner has been hit where people just turn rather tightly. I mean, it's a, I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know how narrow, the width of the alley is, but it's very narrow, especially with the garbage cans right behind the fence.
Thank you. Did you talk with any of your neighbors about this and how did the discussions go?
I've posted, I'd sent out a letter to all my neighbors and I posted a sign on my door talking to my neighbors about everything. I didn't have anybody object to it or any negative comments or, or remarks back.
I'm, oh, go ahead, Joelene.
Just a quick question, this is Joelene Saul. And sorry if you addressed this and I missed it. Are there other houses on the block that have attached garages?
No.
Can we go back to the image of the front of the house that shows kind of the... Okay, any additional questions from the board? Okay, sounds like none. We'll take this under consideration and thanks for, thanks for your time, Mr. Valdivia.
Okay.
All right. We are now. Very quick in a term, we're not going to hear the matter for 106-21-Z yet, but older woman, Michelle Smith, is on and wants to make comments. She won't be present on the matter. So older woman, if you're here, we'd like to get your comments on the record prior to taking it in an hour or so.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Good to see everybody. I just wanted to provide support for the item that is coming up a little later on the agenda on Astor Street. We didn't get a chance to get our letter of support in time. And I just wanted to say that this applicant followed our process in our ward to get support from the adjoining neighbors, has demonstrated a need. It doesn't appear to have an adverse, the change has no adverse impact on the community. And I just wanted to express my support for that matter.
Great, thank you, older woman. And when we hear the matter, do you expect, just for my reference, do you expect someone from your staff to be on in case we have questions?
Yes, Joanna, as I'm from my staff, is waiting in the wings in case there are any questions.
Great, all right, thank you, older woman. We really appreciate you coming in.
Thank you for letting me speak. Take care. Bye-bye.
Okay, let's go calendar number 93-21-Z at 5924 West Chicago Avenue. Yeah, man, was that 93, sorry. 93-21-Z, sorry, sorry if I said that wrong. Thank you. So if the applicant is present, they can let us know.
This is Juan Teague from One and Only, the property owner, and then Craig Richardson. Is he on from Better and Berry?
Great, he's here, Juan.
Okay.
Very wonderful. And Juan, who is going to be presenting the case?
It will be our architect, which is Adi. Is Adi on?
Yes, I am. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Adi. Okay, great, so let's, to get started, let's get everyone formed in because I understand that there's a few, a few different parties involved. So I'll get you each on the record and if you could just let us know for our perspective, which party you represent and how it pertains to the application. So I'll start with, with you, Mr. Onayemi, and sorry if I'm saying your last name wrong. I apologize.
You were perfect.
Thank you. And so could you please just state your name and address for the record?
So my name is Adey Konley, that's Onayemi. And my address is 2532 West Warren Boulevard, Chicago 60612.
Great, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great, and I'll next get Juan Teague on the record. So Juan, if you're present, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure, my name is Juan Teague. My address is 5924 West
My address is fifty-nine twenty-four West Chicago Avenue is the property, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six five one. Do you want my home address?
No, that's great, that's great, thank you. And Juan, do you swear firm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, sir.
Great, okay. Next up, we've got Craig Richardson. So Craig, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Craig saying his audio isn't working, so hold on one second.
Yes, Craig only joined with video feed. I think he may have to log out and join the meeting again.
Okay, I'm calling you. Hey, he said that you have to log out and log back in. They're trying to swear you in right now. He says your audio, if your audio is not working. Yeah, get on from your phone. Okay, cool.
Thanks, and we'll just need Craig on because I believe in he represents the applicant.
Hello?
Okay, there we go.
All right.
Craig, can you please state your name and address to the record?
Craig Richardson, seventy-one thirty-eight South Bennett Avenue, Chicago, Illinois.
Thank you, and do you swear firm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Great. Okay, with that, Mr. Onayemi, I think I think I remember correctly that you're going to present the case, so you you all can go right ahead.
Yes, I am. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm a licensed architect and I'm the architect of record for this project. This is the project is a restaurant to be located at fifty-nine twenty twenty-two West Chicago Avenue. This is initially existing building is was used as contractors offices and single story and with the adjacent lot, which was an empty lot owned by the city that we now have possession of. So the proposed project is a sit-down restaurant that would be in the existing one-story brick building. And that adjacent property that you saw that was a vacant lot would then become an outside patio. So we would have sit in on the on the one inside and the one-story brick building and the with extension of the to the patio when when permissible. Of the reason for the variance is that the up we have to apply for a license an amusement license to serve the proposed restaurant and the outdoor patio. And it is within a hundred and twenty-five feet of residential zoning district. So if you would, if I could look at the the zoning map, you would see that. So yes, so we are a C two dash two commercial, you know, right along Chicago Avenue and contiguous to the north is residential district. That that is an RS three district. And right in front of the building and to the south, if you see that big big building that is with a big roof, that's actually an RT four district. So it's it's less than, it's about sixty-six feet across from the building. Now, that is currently, that's a church in an RT four. Now, what we're stating here is all along Chicago Avenue, on both sides, exception of the church, are actually commercial businesses. That's all commercial, the districts are C, C, C two, B three, you know, commercial and business district. The RS three district, though, in the back from east to the east, excuse me, to the west would be Austin Boulevard. Now, from Austin Boulevard going east to central, which is about one point five miles, is all residential district contiguous. So we would not, no matter where we're located, along Chicago Avenue, we would need this with this variance. This particular restaurant business was, we we went, and I say when I say we, I am part of the Austin Business, Austin African-American Business Network that tries to attract businesses and commerce to this place for economic development. And working with the Department of with the Department of Planning, we actually try to attract businesses such as this to the to the neighborhood. And and part of the of the work that we've done was ensuring that this became a thrive zone for this type of business because there are very few restaurant that are sit-down restaurants that could also provide sit-down events where people don't bring liquor and things like that or cater. So this is a very important business for the economic development of this corridor, which we're calling Soul City Corridor. At this point, there that I don't know that there are any objections to to what we're trying to do. I know the business community is very interested in seeing this this particular business situated here. That particular building has been laying vacant now for the last ten years that I could think of. I've been on that corridor since two thousand and five. So if there are any other questions, I would like to entertain that right now.
Great. Can you just give us a little bit of a glimpse into operations at the site? I know there's there's and correct me if I'm reading the application wrong, but there's there's the restaurant element and then there's an element of a of it being a venue. And am I calling it's the Bruce, right?
Correct.
Okay, great. Can you give us just some more insight on the Bruce, what type of venue it is? What type of music, if any, if there will be a coverage charge, things like that?
So one of the things, so the Bruce is basically named after my father who passed away in twenty sixteen, I'm twenty, yeah, twenty sixteen. And so we, I was raised and brought up in the Austin area. And so one of the things when Batter and Berry is along with myself, we were really analyzing the area. We were trying to figure out what was missing. And so my company, which is Juan and Only Events, we produce consumer engagement, gospel recordings, we festivals throughout the city of Chicago. And one of the things is that what we were trying to do is figure out how to attract people and stop and stop the narrative of the West Side is bad. So we looked at Batter and Berry's brand, as everyone knows it, as great food, the French toast fries. And then they also know our my brand, which is Juan and Only, from attending so many of our events and both have a diverse crowd. So the goal of it, what we did is we did a whole analysis. We were able to get the University of Chicago students involved to do a whole analysis of the area. And what we found out was that in Austin, there is not a full-service banquet facilities, which means a lot of the event spaces, you can bring your all food and all drinks in the establishment. And what we wanted to do was to be able to provide people an opportunity in the community to have someone where you have a chef that trains, trains young adults in the community, how to become chefs, sous chefs, hosts in the hospitality industry. So what we decided to do was, okay, the restaurant closes at three P M. What can we do to really put some some programming and some things together that the neighborhood hasn't had before? So one element is doing the full-service banquets, which the chef Ken, who's also the chef of Batter and Berry's, will pretty much create the menu. As far as it being with the events, so with our with our events, we not going, we've always did safe events as well as really just trying to understand the community. And what we found out was we're going to focus a lot on programming. So for instance, we have Bishop Pettis, which is across the street. We spoke to their organization. And one of her concerns was, you know, when they're having church, if we're going to have events that, you know, coming out of church that may not, they may not approve of. And so what we decided to do was say, okay, we found a gentleman named Buster Woods, who who's known in the gospel community, and he's going to do what we call the broadcast. And so what it is is that we're not going to be like doing, I'm not trying to, we're not trying to do it as a club because any of we're not trying to do it like that. So what it will be to basically cover the cost of any of the live music from the gospel artists that are coming, there will be a fee beforehand that basically absorbs that cost and give it to the commute, the musicians that are, a lot of them will be located in Austin. So and then some of the other elements is more like I'm with Oak Park, we're going to be talking to the Frank Laurie Wright people and putting some programming together for them to do and offer our space to do some of their, so some of their speaking engagements and stuff in our facility to bring that diverse mix of people in, just in people that are tourists and on the Floyd Wright side. And then also with the city of Chicago, with the new tourism and culture initiatives, just trying to figure out what things go well with the space. And then from my from my company, we have corporate sponsors and we also have celebrity from Dwayne Wayes. We've been working with his foundation with all his philanthropy efforts, Common, all of their philanthropy efforts. We've already, I've already had conversations with them. So instead of doing a lot of our programming and events downtown and up north, we're going to start bringing those things to that facility to bring awareness and bring people to come to that area. And the goal of basically is to see my company as well as Batter and Berry's on Chicago Avenue that will then spark for other brands such as ours to start bringing and investing on the West and the South Side.
Great, thank you for that. That was really helpful. And so it between the the restaurant and the venue, is it, will it be the same space?
Yes.
And okay, it's the same space, just one is at night outside of breakfast hours and one is in breakfast hours.
Yeah, and 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 the events and everything will not be daily. We're just testing it to see what it is and to know both the Richarsons, who's at the Batter and Berry's and myself, we're all about our biggest thing is just changing the narrative where we find with me, I grew up in the inner city in Austin. We want to basically even with bringing a workforce is to train everyone that there's careers beyond the stage, beyond being an influencer and stuff like that. So we're actually putting programming together where there's actually a class. So we're teaching them like everything in production, everything in hospitality. So it's beyond the doors, it's really just trying to be that hub to show kids that me, I didn't graduate from college. I started off my first job at four dollars and forty-five cents and I look like you and I'm now making over six figures. So I think that's what our ultimate goal is, is to really, and it'll be ever-changing, to really understand how we can be good neighbors to the residents as well as the other businesses, but to also be able to be an establishment where so many people have learned the hospitality, culinary and events industry.
Great, and and this question goes really down to, I don't know, it could be for the architect maybe, but I I'm just trying to envision why the PPA license is required here. There's a few reasons why these are required. It's either like a venue that seats more than ninety-nine people or you're charging cover at the door. Does anyone have perspective on why the PPA license is being requested?
It's because of the proximity to the residential.
Yeah, great. And on that note, it sounds like have there been significant talks with the neighbors outside of, I know the church, you Jason first?
Oh, yes, yes, we actually was at a meeting yesterday in the corridor with residents and business owners, just basically brainstorming on other things and like the RFP just got granted by Oak Park on on what was that, Chicago Avenue and Laramie? So we just had a meeting and literally we had residents basically telling me when their seventieth birthday party is and all that kind of stuff and making sure we're going to be open to kind of host things for the community. So we've been, we've been having outreach with the community and both residents and business for the past year and a half.
Yeah, thank you. And just as a clarification, because the reason for the variation, I understand is it's within a hundred and twenty-five feet of residential. I'm trying to trying to see why the PPA license is required. Craig, maybe as applicant, do you know what's the activity that's making that license required?
We would need, I think, basically maybe to address the the question. We the the property is is it is, the use is for restaurants, okay? It's the fact that if we're to serve liquor, right, that, yeah, it's, that's really the reason why.
Yes, that was going to be one of my questions.
That that's the reason. That's why, that's why, you know, serving liquor within the one hundred and twenty-five foot.
Right.
Chairman. Chairman, it's Steve Valencia with the Department of Planning and Development. The the PPA is required because they're renting out the facility for events or for private events and they're possibly charging at the door. The reason for the variation, as you know, is the only reason they are here before the board is because they're, they are within one hundred and twenty-five feet of an RS three district. But the RS three district is not what requires them to get the PPA license. It's how they're using the facility. So if they have banquets or events where they charge at the door, or if they have a total seating capacity of over ninety-nine people and they have events or entertainment, then there is requirement for the public place of amusement license. So venues with a capacity of a hundred or more that offer any entertainment, whether they're paying or not, require the license. So they're here because of the operation. And that operation within the distance to the RS three district, which is north across the alley, is what causes them to get the variation.
Great. Great, thank you, Steve. Appreciate that. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Toy, I got a few questions. So are we doing BYOB? Are we going to apply for a liquor license? Could you go a little deeper with me on that? And if we are applying for the liquor license, then whose name is that in? Or who'll be applying for the liquor license?
So we actually, it's not going to be BYOB. And that was because of our conversations also with the community is that a lot of the the event planning places have their own, bring your own food and drinks in. And so that kind of that kind of lends it where people are coming out with bottles, dropping them on the ground and things of that sort. And so the establishment, the Batter and Berry's now in Lincoln Park is a BYOB, but we decided to go for the liquor license. And we're actually meeting with the business office to understand, should that be Batter and Berry's or should that be me as the owner? So we were trying to figure out that and navigate out that, which one is best. But really, we're going for the liquor license. Number one is to, I both Batter and Berry and myself, we all agree we want massive trained employees there. We also want to be able to.
Well, you need to have that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
When you have a liquor license, you got to have massive training.
Yes, and that's why we're going for the liquor license because we listen to the residents and we we basically, and they just wanted somewhere to where they can eat and drink in in basically in the neighborhood because typically they have to go to Oak Park to have that.
Right. It just historically, you usually have the liquor license before you get the PP, PPA. So that's why it's usually we're doing. P P A. So that's why I usually we're do. Usually people have the liquor license and get the P P A, right, Steve? Isn't that usually the way it works? So that's why I was a little, just a little doing it the other way around. Get the P P A and then going for the liquor license. Uh, and then if you do, if we, excuse me?
No, I was just gonna, I'm sorry, this is Steve Valenziano again. Yes, you're, yes, typically. Um, they would get some kind of a liquor license, whether there's incidental or tavern license.
And it's usually, they usually have that before we give the P P A. Am I right, Steve, to say that?
Typically, yeah, typically, yes, correct.
Okay, I just wanna make sure all my colleagues understand that. Then also, um. The other question I have, since we are issuing a P P A and I have been on the board and we've done this before. We haven't gone deep on what your security will be because usually you have a liquor license, then you get the P P A. And then we usually ask, well, what's gonna be your security? Because you don't have the liquor license, I'm not sure anyone's asking that question. So I'm gonna ask that question. What is your, what will be your security? And if you get a liquor license, most likely the liquor license will go to two A M. And then that means you're gonna have these private parties going to two A M. And on Saturday, three A M. So I would like you to go a little bit deeper on what security you would have if we issued a P P A and then you get the liquor license. Like I said, if someone's renting out the hall, you know, renting out the restaurant when it's not open, it's batter and berries. Then they're probably gonna wanna do the party to two A M. And then what security will we have in place?
Right, so um one and only, um our production company has been doing events um sent for the past since two thousand nine. And so one of the most important things is security, especially being now on the west side of Chicago. So the the security will always be scaled according to the events, but also one of the things is that we're. One and only is very selective on what events we have. So it's not gonna be open where we have promoters coming in saying. Oh, tonight is the night where you come and do this. That is not what this is for. Ours is more so doing, it's either gonna be people having from church banquets to weddings and things that, things of that sort. And then outside of that, it will be programming, working with the art district, working with different organizations and creating programming. And so for the security, it literally is scaled where um if we need a two man crew, if we need a. Or you know, the property is um can only do so many people, but the the security will be tight as far as cameras, as far as. Um, people working with um security uh um licensed security firms. Because we believe in making sure we're dealing with people that understand how to deal with people and also understand how to deal, how to do the right security measures. So our security will be very detailed and um. We would definitely, if you guys want us to support as we move forward, we can definitely send you guys the actual plans for security. But one thing um is to note is that, um like I said, we've been doing this for for years and with one and only, we've never had an incident. Because we've always made sure the safety of the um the people that are attending and the safety of the community that we exist in. Has always been safe. So security is pretty much one of our top things that we will be focused on.
Right, again, why I'm asking this question is because historically, you usually have the liquor license before you get the P P A. I'm sure when you go in front of the liquor commissioner, um. That they're gonna ask for operation, you know, plan of operation, you know what I mean? And then I'm sure that will all be in the plan of operation, your security and stuff. I'm just asking all these questions too, because I just wanna make sure my colleagues are getting their head around this as well. You know what I mean? Cause these questions weren't being asked and I, you know, I usually just pop in when I think these questions need to be asked. So that's what I'm saying. So we gotta talk about security and then the sound and then obviously, do you plan on having um? You know, these private parties to two A M. Because then there could be litter after that. You you know this. We're speaking the same language. I just wanna know what the plan of operation is, so.
Yes, so basically, even when it comes to garbage, so we will have a person totally pretty much dedicated to the operations indoor and outdoor. And with the garbage, one of the things is, we we pretty much will take the D N A that we've done for festivals for the tens and thirty thousand people that we've. Um produced and co-produced. And after each event, our goal is to basically in the um S O P of staff is to go out. And clean trash um in front of the building, our neighbors, around the perimeter. That will be something daily, even when it's operating with um during the day for batter and berries, as well as any events that we have at night. Because the one thing is that um we all know that when you wake up the next morning in a business corridor, the last thing you wanna see is trash. That you did not, that that another business has created. So um the trash is definitely one of our concerns. Because we, we, our goal is to come in there and be friendly neighbors and and basically. And we wanna be the model to show all the businesses that are coming in, this is how you do business, that you wanna make sure the trash is clear, you wanna make sure there's security. And also just have communications. And even with us, we talked to them about um when we um when we talk to the community, we talked even about parking. And so we've talked to the churches.
Yeah, I was gonna go there next.
Yeah, they're talking, they've already talked to us and said, hey, the when we're not in session, you guys can basically work out something where we're using their parking lots. And things of that sort. So we, we did a deep dive in understanding garbage, understanding parking and understanding the noise. And even when it comes to the noise, um the neighbors that are behind us, we've had conversations. And we, we pretty much test um noise level. So the speakers will always be to the north. They would never, they, I mean, to the south, they would never be to the north because the north is residential. And to the south is business, the business, which is a cigar restaurant. So the noise will never be where it's pumping out of the building. But because of how we're experiencing the noise levels and things of that sort, it would never be where it's just like doom, doom, doom outside of the building. Um, but if anything, with the neighbors behind us, it would never be a nuisance and there's businesses next door to us. And we just all had communications because there's an event space to three door, three lots next to us. And we've just had conversations and saying, hey, let's understand what the noise levels are gonna be on on all of our stuff. So I think it's just the communication and us being just, um, we're having a professional company come in and actually install the sound. So that we will already know what levels to keep it at. But it's not, this space is not meant to be a club. It will not be a club. It will not be where people think they can come out and just do whatever they want. Cause at the end of the day. Me as the owner, I'm putting my life savings into this project. Um, and it's 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 a huge investment for me and I, cause I'm making it. Um, I'm designing it with batter and berries and everybody of things that we would do in downtown and up north. So this is a huge investment and I will let, I will not allow any attendee or any function to jeopardize that investment.
Yeah, and then again, you don't have the liquor license, but when you do your plan of operation. You know, on an outdoor patio, you could only go to midnight, right? You know that, right?
Correct. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, 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 yeah. Because of, because of, you know, um, and I don't think many people know, I also for um twenty five years, I was in the hotel industry. So understanding what goes on in uh evening functions and things of that sort, I'm very vast on the laws. And the the sound levels and things of that sort. So yes, we do know it goes until midnight.
Very good. All right. Obviously, you thought this through, but like I said, I'm used to usually having liquor licenses and not the. Then getting the P P A. That's why I ask these questions.
No, I appreciate it. I appreciate.
And I'm sure when you go in front, you'd apply for your liquor license, they're gonna ask all these questions too, so.
Yes, of course.
Very good. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Awesome. Thank you, Sam. Um, a- any additional questions from the board?
Yes, hi, this is Jolene. So I have a couple of questions. Um, one, what's the capacity of the space? Like as an event space, how many people can it hold?
Um, right now, we're just basically basing it off of the indoor, uh, cause we're not, because of the the outdoor. Right now, we have it seated. It's only, it's a hundred, it's the same as the restaurant. And then if it's the reception, you probably can add another fifty people to it.
Okay. And then you referenced this a bit um in response to Commissioner Toria's question. But can you just talk about the other uses? In the immediate area. So I know there's a few churches, you mentioned another event space, but can you?
So there is uh Latricia May, then there's also Leila that owns a tube of toys, it's a popcorn shop as well as. Um, they have a space that was an event space slash restaurant, panini bar. And right now they're closed, but they, they're, they're gonna open once we open because they wanted more businesses in the area. Then there's Jamie who owns a um, uh, her uncle used to run it for twenty years, a clothing store. Then Crystal owns the travel agency, Jim has an antique shop. And then there's a cigar shop, which is across the street from me. There's a Planned Parenthood that's on the block. Then you have Bishop Pettis. And then there's now a church that was at the corner that is now owned by a girl named Trina that is gonna be a gem. And then I'm trying to think what else is on, but oh, People's Tacos. And then at the end of the block is the end of the Chicago Avenue um line that's gonna be the first, I think, electric uh line. So currently, that's what the open businesses are on the block.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Sounds like none. Um, thank you everyone too, cause this was super informative. Um, I'm a big fan of batter and berries. Uh, so.
Y'all gotta come over.
We, should we, uh, well, we'll take this under consideration and should everything pan out, I'll, I'll be over there for sure. So thank you everyone and enjoy your weekend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Um, moving along, next up, let's call matter ninety four dash twenty one dash S. And that's thirteen two fifty six South Brandon Avenue. And Jeanette from the Department of Planning and Development is gonna be reading uh the department's recommendation for this matter. I'll get Jeanette sworn in whenever she's on. It sounds like we have some feedback. If ever, if anyone could mute who's not yet speaking, that would be helpful. Great. And and Jeanette, if you're on, will you just please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Jeanette Velazquez. I am a project coordinator for the zoning board of appeals. And the work address is one twenty one North LaSalle uh at City Hall.
Great. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings? Thank you. Okay, cool. Could you go ahead and read us the recommendation?
Yes, uh, the recommendation from the Department of Planning and Development. Recommend approval of the proposed hair salon slash barber shop. The department finds that this proposal complies with all the applicable standards of the zoning ordinance. Is in the interest of the public convenience and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood. The department also finds the proposed hair salon will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area. In terms of operating characteristics. And lastly, it is also designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort.
Thank you very much. Um, all right, I think we're going to have Danny Fuentes online. So Danny, let me know when you're. Um, when you're here.
You're muted.
Okay, hi, uh, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Hi, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
I'm good.
Good. Um, Danny, can you please just state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, my name is Danny Fuentes.
Oh Danny, you dropped out. I I I, I think you dropped out for everyone, but I'm not sure if it's just my sound. Yeah, um, your sound was good and then it dropped. You're back, I think.
Okay, uh, can you, can you hear me now?
Yes, yeah.
I'm sorry, I think something's going wrong with my wifi. It's Danny Fuentes and the address is one three two five six South Brandon, Chicago, Illinois, and then six oh six three three.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Perfect. Um, and Danny, I understand uh that you have some support with you today, correct?
Uh, yes, I believe so.
Okay, so if you bring us through your case, just tell us why you're here and what you're looking for. And then I'll let you um introduce your support and should they speak, I'll just get them sworn in.
Oh, okay. Um, my name is Danny Fuentes and I wanna open up, well, I'm seeking approval for a special use so that I can open up a barber shop. At one three two five six South Brandon. Um, I'm calling it Supreme Cuts Barber Studio. I've been a barber for seven years and I've been working in the same area where I'd like to open for three years. I'm a licensed barber in the state of Illinois and in Indiana. And I wanna open up a barber shop so I can start a family and become the person that I wanna be. And I just want myself and my business to grow so I can provide a clean, professional service to the community and the residents.
Great. And do you wanna get um, get any statements of support on now and then we can ask questions?
Um, sure.
Great. So I think um I have on my list uh a Roman Delio. Does that sound right to you?
Yeah.
Is this Roman?
Yes, hello, this is Roman.
Roman, will you please state your name and address for the record?
Roman Delion, one thirty four fifty South Mackinac, Chicago, six oh six three three.
Great. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I understand you're here in support.
Yes, yes, I have uh known Danny for possibly two years now. A coworker of mine referred me to the barber shop that he previously was at. And that's how I met him. And um, he wanted to open up this other barber shop down the street, which. He is, like I said, the only licensed barber that I know of. So, and he wants to make it a way different uh scenario than other barber shops. You know, where he gets to choose, being an owner, he can choose who he hires. Whereas in the previous shops, he had no choice. He was being the person hired. So whatever the instances may have occurred with other barbers is out of his control. So we're here, he's taken that control to do it the right way and to to basically do a background on all these people that he would have possibly hire. To have the correct uh fit in a business. Because being it is that it's his business, that's his, his money, his livelihood. If it fails, he fails. So he was doing everything the right way and the community, I mean, me personally, me, my son, friends, we all go to him. You know, and it's close enough to my neighborhood. It's in my community. He's a couple of blocks away from my house. Yeah, so, you know, I, I really do respect him and I feel that he is a good asset to our community. There's multiple barber shops from what I've heard, but they're all busy. So there is a need. You know, there's always a wait for barber shops. So with him being opened up as another barber shop, it does um help the need of the community. So we're not trying to get an appointment or wait forever to try to get a haircut.
Okay, great. Yeah, thank you, Mister Mister Delion, and thank you for coming. We appreciate support um from the community being heard. So um Danny, a few questions that come to mind. For me right away, could you give us a little bit of a history on um additional history? On what what the barber shops you've worked in? Um, and then a little bit of an overview in how you will run this, how many employees you anticipate having. How many people you'll seek to get haircuts at one time um and any COVID protocols?
Okay. Um, yeah, I I originally started working in Chicago at a barber shop. Um, I was there for maybe one year and then after that, I started working in Headwish where I want to open. Um, I've been working there for almost three years and I've been licensed and now I wanna just, you know, open up my own business and do things my way, the professional way. Um, basically, um, the way I'm going to run it, there will be eight barber stations. But in the, in the building that I have, there's adequate space to have everyone six feet apart. There's gonna be a waiting area. Nobody will like literally be close together. Um, the barber shop will be open from ten A M. To seven P M. Monday through Saturday. Sundays, we will be closed for cleaning and sanitation. And we will mostly be appointment based. For COVID. Um, there will be temperature checks upon arrival. And I will have um four uh sanitation stations with masks, hand sanitizer, lysol wipes, everything. Like sanitation is number one and it's gonna be a strict, no mask, no service.
Perfect. And sorry if you already said, did you say how many uh, how many employees you anticipate having? How many technicians?
Um, in the beginning, it'll maybe just be me and three others, but I plan on putting maybe six to eight barber stations.
Great. Perfect. Any other questions from the board? Danny, sounds like none. Um, and we know that we've seen your support letters from uh the older woman as well as the Head, the Headwish Chamber.
Yes.
So thank you for your diligence. I'm going out and getting those. It's helpful for us. Um, but we'll, we'll take this matter under consideration.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you guys for your time.
Yep, thank you. Great. Let's now move to calendar numbers ninety five dash twenty one dash Z. And ninety six dash twenty one dash Z, which is at nineteen fifty seven North Willmont Avenue.
Good morning.
Morning. Is this, this Sandler's?
Yes, it is.
Okay, perfect. Let me just get you sworn in because I understand you're representing yourself, correct?
We are.
Okay, perfect. So if you could each just give your name and address and elsewhere you in.
My name is Rachel Sandler. My address is nineteen fifty-seven North Wilmot.
Daniel Sandler, nineteen fifty-seven North Wilmot.
Great, and Rachel first, you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
And I do it as well.
Okay, great. I just got to say, Daniel, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Okay, great. What brings you here today?
We also have our architect here with us, Sharon Stern. I don't know if you want to swear her in now as well?
Yeah, let's, let's, let's just get it over with. Sharon, will you please state your name and address for the record?
Sharon Stern, three twenty West Ohio in Chicago.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, good morning, Chairman and members of the board. I'm Rachel Sandler, here with my husband and co-applicant and owner, Daniel Sandler. Also with our architect Sharon Stern, we are seeking a variation in connection with a permit to replace the existing fourteen by twenty-foot vinyl detached afro garage with a new nineteen foot four inch by twenty-one foot six inch two-car detached garage with rooftop deck, access stairs and access bridge in the rear of an existing attached single-family row home. Specifically, we are requesting the variation to reduce the minimum required rear setback from twenty-eight feet to twenty-two point five feet. Both the north and side setbacks from two feet to zero feet and minimum required setback from the garage to alley from two feet to one feet. And to relocate the minimum required rear yard open space of a hundred and thirty square feet to the garage roof, roof deck. Our property is an attached row home on a smaller than normal Chicago lot measuring twenty feet wide by a hundred feet deep. We are located in the residential neighborhood with a mix of single-family residents and multi-unit homes, many of which have two-car garages with rooftop decks. Our proposed garage is similar to other newer garages with roof decks, I'm sorry, with roof decks in the neighborhood, including many garages which have been built in the past five years in our shared alley. We have discussed our proposed project with many of our neighbors on our street, including those neighbors immediately adjacent to our property, all of whom have voiced their support for said project. Strict compliance with the zoning ordinance would create a practical hardship for our property and prevent us from building any two-car garage due to our substandard twenty by one hundred foot lot, which is narrower and shorter than the typical twenty-five by a hundred and twenty-five Chicago RT four zoned lot. Our variation request is consistent with the stated purposes and intent of the Chicago zoning ordinance in that we are seeking flexibility to promote the continued rehabilitation of our property and are building a structure consistent with other garages in our neighborhood. We are not adversely affecting any of our nearby neighbors or properties and the proposed garage will be more aesthetically pleasing to our neighbors than the existing garage. It is also being built as a two-hour rated structure for the public, in line with public safety and fire codes. I have attached an affidavit in support of our variance application, a true and correct copy of which is attached as exhibit A to the proposed findings of fact. If called on to testify today, my testimony would be consistent with that affidavit and I adopt that with respect to today's hearing.
You just read that, same thing.
I executed affidavits in support of our variation application, true and correct copies of which are attached as exhibit A to the proposed findings of fact. I call on, if called on to testify today, our testimony would be consistent with our affidavit and we adopt that testimony with respect to today's hearing.
We also have our architect Sharon Stern here with us. Sharon, can you give your name and credentials?
Sharon Stern, I'm a registered architect for the last thirty-eight years and have a private practice in the River North area.
And you worked with us to create plans to replace the existing garage with a new two-car garage and rooftop deck, correct?
Correct.
And you submitted an affidavit in support of that, in support of our variance application?
Yes.
And that is a true and correct copy of that affidavit is attached as exhibit B to the proposed findings of fact, correct?
Yes.
And if that is a true and accurate, that is a true and accurate copy of the testimony if you were called on to speak today, correct?
Correct.
And you adopt that testimony. Okay, at this point, I'd like to ask if the board has any questions for us.
I do. This is Commissioner Toya. You mentioned this was a short lot. But I want to know, and technically you're right, but what are your neighbors? Are there short lots too, or are they, are they the standard lots in this neighborhood?
So some, so most of them are hundred foot lots in this.
Right, that's what I figured. So most of them are hundred foot lots in this part of town, right?
Uh, yes, I think the street over might have a hundred and twenty-five. However, our lot is narrower than the other standard lots in our neighborhood in that we are only twenty feet wide, whereas most other lots are twenty feet, twenty-five feet wide.
When you say most, is that on this block, let's just stick to this block, you say most, is that eighty percent, fifty percent?
So there are, there are seven row homes in a row. Right here, those would all be twenty, but the rest of the homes on the street would be twenty-five or larger because we also have some multi-unit wide buildings.
All right, so but seven of them in a row are exactly the lot that you have, right? Okay, all right, just wanted to go a little deeper on that. Thank you.
Hi, this is Jolene Saul. I was looking at the drawings of it. Can you clarify if there is a connector from your house to the roof deck and or stairs in the rear yard to the roof deck?
So there is a, there is an existing landing off of the deck and the proposed plan is to continue that existing landing over the existing, well, which now are stairs to the rooftop deck. And then there will be a set of stairs going down to the down to the ground floor from up that are adjacent to the proposed garage.
So both.
Yes, there will be.
Okay, and question here, because I think in your intro, I got a good sense of what the hardship is related to. And, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but you said that without the variation, you cannot build any new garage. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so I understand hardship there. We require an additional hardship for why you need a bridge. The stair you have on the back of your garage that goes to the roof deck, that's covered in, that's covered in what we call Hopkins, the Hopkins Amendment put into place really to make an alternative to getting to these roof decks. So can you explain the bridge a little bit?
Sure, because we are, so if you can see from the pictures, you'll see that there is a bridge going essentially from the back door of the existing single-family home across to, to the garage. You can also see on the south elevation, on all the elevations that there is going to be stairs that are actually inset into the garage because of the, because the lot is, is too short with the number of risers that you would need in order to access the top of the deck.
Okay, and so my question would be, why do you need both? If there's, you know, if one, one will provide access to the roof deck.
Well, I can answer that. We don't have the width to do a full stairs with a run. It's, it's two feet, two inches too short. So we have an exit door, pedestrian door from the garage to the rear yard. And, you know, with the thickness of the wall, the width of the door, we are already very close to the door for the end of the stairs. And what I need is, I believe I need thirteen feet four inches with a landing at the top at the roof deck. And I don't have that. I only have, I think, eleven feet, one inch for a run. And so that's why we're taking the landing at the rear door, the rear back door of the home. And we are extending that landing over to meet the stairs. Otherwise, we'd have to have two stairs, one for the house and one for the roof deck.
Okay. Okay, so the hard, the hardship here is really the width of the lot.
Yes.
That's what I was getting at, Jeremy.
Yeah. And you did a great job, Commissioner Toya. I just, you know, sometimes need things a few times.
It might take me a little more too. I have a question. This is Commissioner Sanchez. And this might be best answered by the architect perhaps. But could you explain a little bit more about why you wouldn't be able to build a garage without the variation?
Well, we can't, we can't have a two-car garage without the variation because right now the inside of the garage is, I think, eighteen feet four inches.
A standard two-car garage is twenty feet in width. Our proposed garage is nineteen feet for four inches, which is smaller than a typical standard two-car garage due to our narrow lot.
Okay, thank you.
Can, can we flip real quick to, if there's an image of what the backyard looks like right now?
So that is the existing landing from the back door of our single-family home. And that landing is what would be extended.
Extended, got it, okay. Okay, and sorry, just bear with me. So to get out of your house, the background, you need a set of stairs because it's elevated?
Yes.
From that, okay.
Yes. And it, the, you can see that there is an existing set of stairs right now going down to the yard from the landing.
Okay, that, that existing garage, that's a one-car garage?
Uh, yes. Yes.
So you could have a one-car garage without the variation. You just can't have a two-car garage without the variation. Is that correct?
Technically, my, yes, but my garage right now, um, it is kind of sitting kind of where I want it or where, where we're, where we're proposing.
More questions from the board?
All right, so if for some reason you were going to tear down that garage and build the same one, would you still need a variation?
Yes, I would.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? All right, we'll take this under consideration. Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, let's now move on to calendar numbers ninety-seven dash twenty-one dash Z, which has a companion special use application for not forty-nine dash twenty-one dash S.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Alondo Acosta here on behalf of the applicant. I have here with me today, hopefully they're on, Zev Solomon, the manager of the applicant, and Jeff Goulet, the principal designer for this project from the firm of Solomon Goulet.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
And I also have Peter Poulos, our praiser.
Great, and I'm going to quick, since there is, we're, these, these applications both go together, right? So the variation, great, I'm going to quick read the Department of Planning and Development's recommendation. So as it relates to calendar number forty-nine dash twenty-one dash S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a six-story thirteen-dwelling unit building with commercial use of eighteen oh nine square feet, which is under twenty percent of the lot area on the ground floor. Provided that develop, provided that the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated March eighth, twenty twenty-one, prepared by SGW Architecture and Design.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, Counselor, so if you just want to get your, your applicant, any witnesses, we'll form it.
Zev, are you here?
I am.
He's prepared to be sworn in. Mr. Chairman, if you wish, or if you want, I can start with my preamble.
Let's just swear a man. Zev, so can you please state your name and address for the record?
Zev Solomon, thirteen twenty-seven West Newport, Chicago, Illinois.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much.
Jeff, are you here?
Yes, I am.
Jeff, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, I'm Jeff Goulet, thirty-four hundred North Lakeshore Drive, Chicago.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great.
And Peter, are you here?
I'm here.
Peter, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Peter Poulos, certified praiser with State of Illinois and MI designation, offices at five, at fifty-five hundred Pearl Street, Rosemont, Illinois.
Great, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great, and we acknowledge your expertise here. So with that, Counselor, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The subject matters involve a property at the northwest corner of Madison and Carpenter Street. Common address of six North Carpenter. They're currently improved with a series of buildings, including Herzog's Furniture, which is the primary, the owner of the property and the primary user on site. The proposal, as the department's recommendation mentions, is for a six-story residential building containing thirteen units. The request before you is first on the special use to provide ground floor commercial space that is eighteen hundred square feet approximately, which is below the twenty percent of the lot. And then the second is to waive a loading berth. The actual second request, the variation to waive the loading berth resulted from the department's review of the, this matter. And actually, it was their recommendation that in order to expand the commercial space from what was originally proposed, that, and given the low volume of units here, that perhaps a loading berth wasn't really practically needed. Loading could be accommodated in the garage. It was suggested that we apply for a variation to waive the loading berth so that we could expand the commercial space as now shown. The, the commercial spaces, this area is, Madison is the primary commercial street. Carpenter has much more of a residential flavor to it. Our commercial space expands most of the frontage along Madison Street, except for the western thirty-six feet or so of the property. The property is a hundred and fifty feet of frontage on Madison, a hundred feet of frontage on Carpenter. It does not have an alley to the rear. The shortness of the property, its depth on Carpenter, as well as the lack of alley have created difficulties in both expanding the commercial space and providing the loading berth. Anticipating either your or Board Member Toya's questions about the block, this is sort of unique in this, in this area. The properties on the south side of Madison have a hundred and twenty feet of depth as opposed to our one hundred and all have an alley behind us, behind them. So that facilitates circulation and actually And actually allows us, would allow us to remove to some extent. The circulation, some of the circulation we have to provide on site. The properties immediately west of this property, you cross Aberdeen, while a hundred feet in depth. Do not have, do have a rear alley. So we have kind of a unique half-block, I'll call it here. Where we don't have an alley into the rear and we don't have. That, what is Chicago typical, a hundred and twenty-five feet of depth. The proposal has been through a thorough review that led to the support of the Department of Planning and Development. The witnesses have all provided their written statements beforehand. I'd like to turn to them to affirm their statements and then move on to the board's questions if there are any. Oh, one more note, we have submitted a. Performer showing rates of returns with and without the variation, showing approximately something north of twelve percent with the variation. Something getting very close to seven percent without the variation, and that is exhibit D twenty-five in our submittals. With that, Zev.
I'm sorry, what do I need to do?
You need to answer my question when I ask it.
Okay.
So, Zev, you have previously provided to the board an affidavit summarizing your testimony in this matter. And if you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to Jeff.
Yes.
If you were, you similarly provided an affidavit summarizing your testimony in this matter. And if you were to testify today, would your answer be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes.
And Peter, you prepared a report relating to the special use in this matter. And if you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with that report?
Yes, it would.
Mr. Chairman, we'd like to turn it over to the board and answer any questions you may have about this matter.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Toya. Um, I know there's a very active neighborhood organization over in this part of town. Have you reached out to the neighborhood groups and how did they respond?
So, great question, Board Member Toya. I should have included that in my preamble. We have met with the West Central Community Organization. We have met with the West Loop Community Organization. We have met with neighbors of the West Loop. We've also met with the local aldermen and none of them have had any issues with this. Actually, letters of support were provided by WCA and Wilco. But they arrived to us after the Friday cutoff, so I don't believe they're in your package.
All right, very good, cuz I just know it's a very active part of town, so that's good to hear. Thank you.
Hi, this is Jolene. So I have a question more tied to the special use. I'm assuming the request to reduce the commercial is tied to the parking. And it looks like you have almost two to one parking ratio in a. Fairly well-transported, transit served location. So can you just speak to the need for the amount of parking there?
It's basically, these are very large units, thirteen condominium units. Based on the demand in the area and the experience by the applicant at a similar project further east in the West Loop. This is what the market is calling for with the two-car per unit because of the size and nature of this unit. Hopefully, it'll be mostly for parking and they will use public transit when they need to go in the immediate area.
Thank you. What are the bedroom sizes?
Zev?
The bedroom sizes or the bedroom counts?
Count, and I guess you can just speak to the, the unit square footage.
So the, the units range from about twenty-four hundred to about thirty-eight hundred square feet. They are all minimum four beds, plus a family room. Some of them are five beds with a family room and an office, so they're very large.
And you've done a similar project to this?
I did. I did a project, as Rolando mentioned, about three blocks east of here. Slightly more units, seventeen units that has sold all but one.
Thank you.
Yeah, so counselor mentioned that without the variation, this return goes from around twelve percent to seven percent. What I'm wondering is, what does the building look like without the variation? Do you do a less, one unit less or where? Where, what do you do instead?
You know, it's, part of it is the loss of revenue attributed to. The loss of, it would be the loss of parking. And so a large unit with only one parking space. Has a considerably diminished value relative to the larger with two parking spaces. It may not seem logical, but the market valuation for having that luxury of two unit, two parking spaces with the big unit. Is very significant. So when I did my analysis, I took some valuation. Something like, I think, ten percent of a unit value. You could lose as much as a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of value. If you didn't have the ability to provide a second space. And so largely, it's the loss of parking that results in the loss of revenue for the same unit.
Zev, this is Jeff. If I could jump into it, also would diminish our unit count or unit size. Because we are right at the limit of our FAR, so any. Adherence to the strict twenty percent retail requirement would mean that that space would have to come out of. Units in the building somewhere.
Great. Any additional questions from the board? We'll take this under consideration. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up. Ninety-eight dash twenty-one dash Z and ninety-nine dash twenty-one dash Z at thirty-two forty-four dash fifty West Bryn Mawr. And after this, we'll take a ten-minute break.
Good morning again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Rolando Acosta here on behalf of the applicant. The matter before you involves a parcel mid-block just west of Kedzie on Bryn Mawr. It has an existing building that was, that is of historical significance as determined by the city of Chicago. Particularly its front facade. It has been vacant for a good fifteen years. We have gone through a community process to develop a project that I, that is welcomed by the community. At least as indicated by their support for this, as well as the variations that are requested. We have requested two variations, a rear yard setback variation. And a loading berth variation. The particular hardship here is arising from the fact that we have to retain the front facade. And there were requests for separations from that facade for the new building that will be erected behind it. Those requests really came from the Department of Planning's Landmark Division that wanted us to step it back. We originally had proposed a five-foot setback. And then they requested us to expand it to a thirteen-foot setback, or I guess we agreed, they preferred sixteen, but couldn't get there. From the facade. In addition, while. The neighborhood retail along this strip is not. It's significantly vacant nowadays. The neighborhood did want us to retain some commercial frontage to this. Although it's Zone B two-three, would allow for residential ground floors, ground floor use. So we had to accommodate some retail space along the frontage of this building, which obviously truncates the usable space in the garage. Behind there and limits our parking. So to accommodate the thirty parking spaces needed for the thirty units at the one-to-one requirement. That is the genesis of the request for the loading dock variation. I have with me here today, oh, I should mention, cuz I forgot in the last one. We, we had a community meeting a little over a year ago. That was favorable received. We have letters of support. I think one made it by your deadline, one did not, from the. North Park Chamber of Commerce. We have another letter of support from the Hollywood dash North Park Community Association. So both the chamber and the residence organizations. And I don't know if the alderman was here. She had indicated to me she would be, but it has her strong support. Because this project is viewed as a catalyst to reviving the commercial along Bryn Mawr by bringing greater density. I happen to live two blocks from here, so I'm very excited about this project. Cuz I've been here for thirty years and we need help along Bryn Mawr. With that, I have with me Igor Mission, who is the principal with the applicant, and John Hannah, who is the architect for the project. If you could swear them in, please.
Thanks, counselor. And I'll note that we do have the alderwoman here, I believe. So you can. You can decide when is appropriate for her to speak on behalf of this project, so.
That's easy, Mr. Chairman. Whenever she wants to speak, she can.
If you're ready right now, we can do this at the beginning.
Perfect, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Excellent. Well, thanks for the nice tip, Rolando. Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Working with the community and local businesses, the developer and his team have come up with a design that will benefit the community and the local business economy. They did prioritize, as Rolando mentioned, saving the facade and maximizing the setbacks of the upper stories. The support of the, both the Hollywood North Park Community Association and the North Park Chamber of Commerce Planning Commission. They have that. I have no objection to this application and ask for your favorable considerations. So thank you for allowing me to speak to this matter.
Yeah, thank you for coming, alderwoman. We appreciate your time.
Great, have a good one.
You too. Okay, counselor, so if we could get sworn in, Igor Mission?
Here.
Great, Igor, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure. Igor Mission, thirty-two forty-four West Bryn Mawr Avenue, Chicago.
And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great.
John?
Here.
John, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure, John Hannah, President of Hannah Architects, Inc., one eighty West Washington, Chicago, Illinois, licensed architect in the state of Illinois.
Thank you, and do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask, Mr. Mission. Igor, you previously prepared an affidavit, executed it, it was submitted to the board that summarized your testimony in these matters. If you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with those affidavits? Yes. John, similarly, you prepared an affidavit summarizing your testimony in this matter. If you were to testify today, would that, your testimony be consistent with those affidavits?
It would.
Mr. Chairman, we are happy to answer any questions the board, the board may have regarding this matter.
One question, and I think I know the answer to it, but the facade will be staying, correct?
Yes, the facade is, yes, the facade, they haven't officially landmarked it, but they're treating it as a landmark. So we have agreed to restore, repair, retain the facade and support it. And we have submitted to support plans during the demolition so that it stays. It is a notable facade.
Great, perfect. And I'll just note, thank you for doing, I saw you submitted an economic analysis. And I'm just taking the moment as a PSA to note that. We will have a standardized form going forward, so everyone should look out for it. And I think it's gonna make it much more simple for everyone.
We appreciate that.
Any questions from the board? None on this one, so we'll take it under consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great, and with that, we'll take a ten-minute recess to go to eleven thirty-five AM. So I'm motioning for recess. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. We can be at eleven thirty-five AM.
Great.
All right, I move that we reconvene the meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals, Commissioner Toya Seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
Great, then we are back. Let's call the next up matters one hundred dash twenty-one dash S and one hundred and one, one hundred and one dash twenty-one dash D. As everyone gets situated, I'm going to read the department's recommendations for the special use. Okay, for calendar number one hundred dash twenty-one dash S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a forty-eight stall off-site parking lot for the newly renovated one hundred ninety-unit residential building at seven thousand South Shore Drive, provided that the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, prepared by DGP Architecture. Hey, Counselor, whenever you're ready.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, once again, members of the board, Rolando, a contact here on behalf of the applicant. I have three, actually four witnesses with me here today. This matter involves a parking lot that serves as accessory parking. You can see it outlined on your screen for a building that is at the opposite corner of the block, on the northeast corner of this block, that contains a hundred, will contain a hundred and ninety units, it currently contains a hundred and seventy-eight units. The proposal, as approved by the zoning administrator through an administrative waiver, is to add twelve units to this building, all inside of the building. Of the twelve units, six units will be made affordable pursuant to the Affordable Housing Ordinance of the city under an agreement with the Department of Housing, which was a voluntary commitment by the applicant. The, the units, this building was built in nineteen twenty-six, it's a vintage building in South Shore, it had some very large units, over three thousand square feet, they're kind of ramble through the building. It made sense to add some units within that space, make them more efficient, they will still be of significant size with the smallest unit resulting from this being eleven hundred square feet, three bedrooms, two bath units, which would, and so this parking is, was originally intended to be, as you can now see a photo of this building. It was built just before the Great Depression. The, I will note for purposes of the special use, that, and this is the existing parking lot, I note for the purposes of the special use, that a similar special use was granted under Cal. number four seventy oh three S to allow forty-eight parking spaces to be located on this property, but the owner at the time chose to only build twenty-seven, and so we're just trying to go back to sort of the original plan, forty-eight spaces that would serve a hundred and ninety units in this case. For purposes of the variations, I will note that two variations were previously granted under Cal. numbers three seven three ten Z, reducing the front yard setback to five feet, we're now requesting seven feet, and under forty-seven, four seven one oh three Z, also reducing front yards on this property. The parking lot is in existing use, it will meet all of the required landscaping provisions as reviewed by the Department of Planning and Development in connection with it, with it analyzing this project for purposes of its recommendation. We've also had it reviewed by CDOT to ensure that the driveway access that's proposed is consistent with CDOT standards. The access to this parking lot will be provided from the alley, so there will be no interruption in the sidewalk as it is today. The street frontages will all have a landscape buffer, most of it exists today. It will remain, be augmented as necessary, what will be added will be some internal landscaping that is required. Our eastern side setback, which is triggering a side setback variation, right along that property line, there's an existing board-on-board fence that will be retained, we'll build a new one, it's in a bad state of repair, but effectively for that property owner, there will be no change in its immediate boundary. And I will note, there's a couple of parking lots in the immediate area, one, effectively one property east of this, and one immediately north of the building that contains the units, none of which provide any of the necessary setbacks, none of which provide any of the landscaping required. So we have a particular hardship here for purposes of the variation in that to accommodate the dimensional.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt, I just became aware that our court reporter has her hand raised, and I just want to make sure she can hear what you're saying, so don't want to go through it again.
Yeah, hi there, sorry, this is the court reporter, um, no, I was just wondering, my, my video is disabled, but I, I can, I can hear everyone fine, I just wanted to make sure that, that I could actually talk if I needed to interrupt, but thank you.
You, you absolutely can, and yeah, so your, your video is disabled just by your choice, right? We don't need to fix anything?
No, 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 it wasn't, it, it said it was disabled, so that's why I was asking, but I didn't choose that, but okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
Okay, no worries, okay, thank you, go ahead, Counselor.
Glad it wasn't me. The, those two parking lots, as I was saying, don't have any, meet any of the required setbacks or provide the landscaping. In our case, in order to meet all of the dimensional requirements for the landscaping that's required, the depth of stalls, the width of aisles, et cetera, and to accommodate that within this lot, if we had to provide the setbacks, we simply couldn't. The result would be in a loss of parking spaces sufficient that it would be, we would be unable to provide the units in the building because the units themselves require, the new units require parking. So we wouldn't be able to accommodate the twelve parking spaces that we need for the proposed twelve new units. This plan not only accommodates those, but it adds another nine, simply because there's a space. Adding or subtracting from that nine really doesn't affect the overall layout sufficiently to be able to make us, make it possible for us to meet the setbacks. So really, the triggering hardship here is that we're required to provide twelve parking spaces. This is the property that is owned where they can be provided, and in order to do so, we need those setback variations that have been requested. I have four witnesses, Mr. Chairman, starting with Paul Oddland, who is the manager of the applicant. Paul, can, are you here?
I am here.
Can you, the chairman needs to swear you in.
This is, that is correct.
Thank you, and Paul, will you please state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, Paul Oddland, ten Fay Drive, F A Y, Kentfield, California, nine four nine zero four.
Thank you, and do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I, I do.
I have Amy Johnson, who is the principal in charge of this project. Amy, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Amy Johnson, five one eight seven Beeler Court, Denver, Colorado.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, do you swear, do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceeding?
Yes, I do.
Great.
Stephen, who's our architect, are you here?
Yes, I am, this is Stephen Doogood, I am Principal of DGP Architecture. Located at twelve four Ranch in Chicago.
Great, I think, I think we got most of that, Stephen.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we might have some connection problems, but got most of your address, so do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great, thank you.
And finally, Mr. Peter Pulos, who's our appraiser on this matter.
Yes, and Peter Fornin, and we recognize his expertise already, and I've got to compliment his Zoom background as well.
I L L.
I N I.
So, Mr. Chairman, with that, I'd like to get the witnesses to validate their affidavits, and then move on to any questions the board may have. Paul, in connection with this matter, you prepared an affidavit which was submitted to the board, and if you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with that affidavit?
It would.
Thank you, Amy? You, similarly, you prepared an affidavit for the board, and that was submitted to the board, and if you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes, it would.
And Stephen? You prepared an affidavit for the board, and it was submitted to the board, and if you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with that affidavit? I think he's frozen.
Would. Yes, it would, can you hear me?
I, we can now, thank you, and lastly, Peter?
Okay, yes, it would be consistent.
Thank you. Peter, you prepared a report in this matter that summarizes what would be your testimony in this matter, and if you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with that report?
Yes, it would.
Thank you, with that, Mr. Chairman, we are happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thanks, Counselor. Just as a clarifying point, more so noting it than asking, but you can shut me down, of course, if I'm wrong, but both the special use and variation, this is all about the parking, none of, nothing's happening to the building today with us, right?
That is correct, it's all about providing the accessory parking for that building.
Okay, great, any questions from the board?
Hi, yes, this is Jolene Saul, I have a couple. The first is, what, what is the current, you know, the current utilization of the existing parking? And then, how many spaces would you have if the variation is not granted?
So, I think that, I can try to answer both of those, we, the building is partially vacant today. So, the applicant bought it in two thousand and nineteen, it has some serious HVAC issues that caused an entire tower here to have to be vacated, so there's no real current utilization that we can provide you because of that, or at least an accurate one, because it's mostly, part of the building's vacant. The, with twenty-five, it's roughly is about twenty-five percent of the units, I think it's twenty-four technically percent of the units, which is consistent with what they anticipate to be the demand for this type of unit, these types of units in this neighborhood, which is not really a lot of, in terms of, a lot of parking in terms of percentage. I don't know that we fully have gone through an analysis of what would be lost without the variation, but it would be more than twelve parking spaces, so we would start to lose units, additional units in this case.
Okay.
Simply because if you look at the set, if you look at the site plan, it's on the, it's on the screen, and you had to provide them, you would, you would lose one of those rows, or both, that are facing either Oglesby or seventieth place, because you'd have to move the lines back from where they are today by thirteen feet.
I hear you, yeah, it would be helpful to know what the alternative is, but thank you.
Any additional questions from the board?
This is Commissioner Sanchez, I have a question, what is the hardship with respect to the parking lot property if the variation is not granted? I get that the other property, there's no point in, in building the extra twelve units or including the extra twelve units in the other property, but what's the hardship with regard to the parking lot property?
Well, I, I think it's really hardship to the applicant, not to the property, so the hardship to the applicant would be the ability to build those units, and I think you'd lose, if you treated Oglesby as your front, you'd lose twelve that are facing Oglesby. If you treated seventieth place, you would lose the ten that are facing as your front, you would lose the ten that are facing seventieth place, and obviously, there's a hardship in, to the extent that their tenants want parking, we have a very limited supply. They would then have to go out and either park on the street or find alternative parking, which hinders the ability to properly tenant this building. But they're linked because they're, they're, it's accessory, it's not a public parking lot.
Is, is it your position that we can consider the hardship to the other property when considering whether to grant the variation for the, for the parking lot?
Yeah, because I believe the hardship has to be the hardship on the applicant that is caused by something related to the subject property.
Well, it's, it's strict compliance with the regulations and standards of the zoning ordinance would create practical difficulties or particular hardships for the subject property.
So it would not be able to be operated. So it would not be able to be operated as a proper parking lot for the building. I mean, effectively, the effect here is sure, you could have a 27 space parking lot. It's existed. You would meet all the setbacks. But from our purposes, it doesn't meet the requirements. We couldn't provide 12 units, including the six affordable. Uh, and we couldn't properly serve the tenants. And again, from a, from terms of the setbacks, this was previously approved with 48 parking spaces and at which time those variances were also granted.
Yeah, the, the, the prior variances, though, are, are not, we're not a precedent-setting board, right? So we have to look at it new every time it comes in.
It's worse today because today we have landscaping requirements and the like that have to be met that clearly weren't met previously.
Uh, this is Jolene Soggan. So I just wanted to be clear. Right now, though, you only need 12 spaces?
We need 12 spaces, yes. To make 12 additional spaces. Yes, we've added another nine. Just because once you start to lay this out, you might as well with all the expenses that are associated with it. We are now expanding enough that we have to provide stormwater detention, for example. So that's being provided on site. So that's another issue. And all of this is just literally the cost of this project don't really make much sense without the units.
Okay, so sorry. Okay, so I just, to do the work in the residential building, do you need 27 plus 12 spaces or 12 spaces?
No, 27 plus 12. We cannot remove the existing 27.
Okay, and, and I'll ask the same question, slightly different. Do you know if you can fit 39 spaces on that lot without the variation?
We cannot.
Can the architect um, chime in as well, please?
Yes, uh, it, it, we're unable to, if, it's telling me my internet connection is unstable, so I'm not sure. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, um, yes, we would, we wouldn't be able to hit the 39 spaces with, without with losing a row either on or on the west. Uh, we would still need spaces in those, in, in, in those rows. So in effect, the setback would still be uh, the variance that we're requesting would still necess, would, would still be the same. Um, we could eliminate some spots, but the setback would still be the same.
I think your answer is that we couldn't accommodate the 39 without a variance.
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
I would like to also point out, Mr. Chairman, if I can, there's no parking on South Shore Drive, so that takes out a whole frontage of, where, where residents in this building could park. So that's all adding to the need to do this. Uh, that some of our adjacent streets don't even allow for parking. We've had no opposition from anyone. We've contacted the alderman's office. No one seems to be uh, very interested in, you know, any further discussions on this because it's really an existing parking lot and serving an existing building. So there's no community objection to this.
Yeah, any, any more questions from the board? We'll take this under consideration. Thank you.
I had one request, Mr. Chairman, and I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but I have a matter on the continued call at the end.
Yeah.
I don't know if that can be moved up to be considered now. It's a simple specialty.
Counselor, we, uh, for a few months now, we're doing strict um, health, religious reasons only on moving around the agenda because we were just getting way too many requests.
We will see you this afternoon then.
Thank you. Okay, great. Let's um, move ahead to 102 dash 21 dash Z and 103 dash 21 dash C at 2030, at 2344 West Meadow Avenue. Counselor, whenever you're present, let us know.
Martin Kava, the owner of MK Construction.
Yep, hold on, Marson.
Yeah, Counselor, so are you present?
Yeah, I'm here.
Great, you can, uh, you can go forward.
Okay, uh, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Fred Augustin. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, MK Construction and Builders Inc. Applicant owns the property at 2344 West Medill. Property is a narrow and substandard lot. It only measures 24 feet wide and only a hundred feet deep. It's currently improved with a single-family home. Applicant would like to demolish it and uh, build a new single-family home with a two-car garage. Um, despite the being, despite the lot being a short and narrow lot, uh, applicant would like to provide as much usable open space at the rear. As a result, he is proposing a rooftop deck on the garage. The stairway access to that deck will connect to the proposed rear porch uh, behind the home. Uh, this connection um, is the reason why the applicant seeking a variation to reduce the rear setback from 28 feet to 20 feet. Uh, further, the applicant does propose to relocate the required rear yard open space of 225 square feet on top of the uh, proposed garage deck. Here with me this morning is Marson Kawa and our project architect, Beata Clark. So first witness would be um, Marson Kawa. So Mr. Kawa, please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, hello, Martin Kava, 2000 Milwaukee, Chicago, six oh six, four seven.
Thanks. And Mr. Kawa, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you.
And you are the president of the applicant, MK Construction and Builders Inc., is that correct?
That's correct.
Um, the current property is improved with an old, single-family residence, is that right?
That's correct.
And your plan is to redevelop it with a new, single-family residence with a two-car garage, is that right?
Yes.
Um, as we stated before, the lot is narrow and substandard, is that right?
Yes.
And despite being a short lot, you still want to provide as much open space at the rear, is that correct?
Yes.
So your plan is to incorporate a rooftop deck on the garage uh, that has stairway that will connect to the rear porch, is that right?
That's correct.
And so given the unique condition of the property, it was more efficient to design the stairway this way, is that right?
That's right.
As a result, we are seeking a variation to reduce the rear setback, correct?
Correct.
Further, since we do have a substandard lot, we are seeking relocate the rear open space onto the proposed garage deck, is that right?
That's correct.
All right, you did pay 435,000 for the property, is that right?
Yes.
And so as an estimate, cost of construction for this home would be around 600,000, correct?
Yes.
And when complete, you anticipate selling the property for 1.2 million?
We hope.
So based on these figures, uh, you hope your estimated return will be around 15%, is that correct?
Yes.
On your behalf, my office did submit an affidavit that you executed, is that right?
That's right.
And if we continued, your testimony would be consistent with the facts presented in your testimony, is that right?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Now I'd like to put it to the architect. Um, Ms., Ms. Clark, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Ms. Clark, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Beata Clark, and the address is 3535 North Harlem Avenue, Unit 205, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six, three, four.
And you are, you are a licensed architect in the state of Illinois, is that correct?
Correct.
And you have testified before the board as it relates to architecture, architect, is that right?
Yes, I did.
Sir Chairman, I'd like to recognize Ms. Clark as an expert witness in architecture.
Yep, uh, thank you. Yeah. Mrs. Clark, we recognize you and um, I'm just going to get you sworn in either way. So do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Ms. Clark, as previously stated, the subject property is a short and narrow lot, is that right?
It's correct, yes.
And in your experience working with such a lot does pose a hardship, is that right?
That's right.
And your plan does call for a single-family home with a garage that will have a rooftop deck?
Yes.
And the stairway to the garage deck will be connected to the rear porch?
Yes.
As a result of the stairway connection, we are seeking a variation to reduce the rear setback.
Correct.
As well as relocating the rear yard open space, is that right?
That's right.
Now, Ms. Clark, just briefly, had this been a standard city lot measuring 25 feet by 125, uh, stairway access to the garage deck would have been designed differently, is that right?
Yes.
There would have been enough room in the rear to provide stairway access to the deck from grade versus connecting it to the rear porch, is that right?
Correct.
And we would still be complying with the rear setback as well?
Yes, yeah.
Further, had this been a deeper lot, you'd, you'd been also be able to locate the rear yard open space at grade, is that right?
Correct.
But since this is a short and narrow lot, uh, you designed the home the way it's proposed today, is that correct?
Yes.
On behalf of my office, we, uh, we submitted an affidavit that you executed?
Yes.
And if we continued, your testimony would be consistent with the facts presented in your affidavit, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions for these witnesses, and we're here to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you. Um, I've got an initial question just for uh, Ms. Clark. Um, Ms. Clark, in designing this setup, I understand it's a short lot. Is there any other alternative or if they want access to the garage roof, is this the only way?
I believe it is. Um, so the problem is if we reverse it a little bit, I, I think it starts with open yard requirement. For this particular zoning, there's square footage requirement as well as the, you know, the minimum dimension of 15 feet um, um, in each direction. So if you look at the plans, the dimension between the house and the garage or the dimension between the required uh, backyard setback of 28 feet and the garage would only leave, uh, leaves us with eight feet where we have to have 15. So in this case, we had to move the open space on the top of the roof deck of the garage. So once you have the uh, the open space on the top of the garage, you need the stairs to get there. At the same time, because the first door of the house is elevated, you need the stairs to get from the, from the house to the yard. So you have, you know, two pair of stairs, you know, with landings and railings and so on. So when you look at the plans, if you just build those stairs to the garage, you would be left with maybe two feet between the stairs of the garage and of the house, which first of all, is not enough. It's, it's not, you know, um, compliant with the um, three-foot minimal passage. And then, you know, just to feed it, just, um, I mean, in, in, in a common sense, it just doesn't work for anyone really. So because the, the, the lot is so short, there's really, you know, now, no other way to do that.
Okay, and, and I mean, can you make an argument that you wouldn't be able to just, there wouldn't be a, a good way to make the house smaller?
Well, we, you know, we, um, so our, our, our backyard setback was, uh, required, what was 28 feet. Um, so we already provided shorter house, shortened, uh, sure, yeah, the house is much shorter because you know, if you look uh, at the distance from the back of the um, lot to the house, it's over 31 feet. So the house is already not, you know, the length that it could be. So it's already shorter. Um, we probably, we couldn't make it any shorter. It's just, it's nothing, you know, it's just standard house. There's nothing really you know, exceptional about that. So it's already, I think, short based on the zoning requirements and um, you know, it, it's just, it is what it's, what it shows in the plans.
Then in addition, if I could add, Mr. Chairman, obviously, then, you know, we have to provide the uh, front setback, which we are meeting, so that kind of hinders the size of the home as well, so.
Okay, and what's the landscape like with the neighbors, with the rest of the block? Because presumably, everyone has these short lots. Um, could you just give us a, an additional um, summary of what, what neighbors have done?
Um, you know, yeah, to have you, um, or Marson, can you um, attest to that real quick, if you're, if you're familiar with what the neighbors have done?
Yes, uh, so neighbors looks like they have existing uh, structures and the neighbor to the west, the one you can see in the picture, having the roof deck garage. And uh, to the east is a brick garage, I would say is a uh, roof deck ready, but I don't see any roof deck. And, but as to your question, Mr. Chairman, uh, looks like the entire block is a hundred-foot lots.
Okay, that's a helpful image.
Yeah. It's, yeah, the rear setback, obviously, there's not much rear um, as well with the adjacent properties.
Okay, any questions from the board? Sounds like none. Um, Counselor and applicant will take this under consideration, so thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yep, enjoy the weekend.
You too.
All right, great. Um, let's go now to matters 104 dash 21 dash Z and 105 dash 21 dash Z at 955 Grand. Okay, Counselor, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Um, good morning, good afternoon. Now, Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners of the board, for the record, my name is Sarah Barnes and I'm an attorney with the offices of Sam Banks located at 221 North LaSalle Street. I'm very happy to be here this afternoon on behalf of the applicant and property owner, 955 Grand Adventures LLC, who is leasing the subject property and improvements to the Bennett Day School. Joining us remotely is Cameron Smith, the co-founder and chief executive officer of the school, as well as Alex Pierceall, the managing member of the applicant and property owner and our project architect, Chris Talsma. If it pleases you, Mr. Chairman, um, we can go ahead and swear in the witnesses now.
Yep, let's do it.
Okay, um, we'll start with Mr. Smith, if you can unmute yourself.
Yes.
Mr. Smith, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Hi, Cameron Smith. My address is 1815 North Albany Avenue in Chicago, Illinois, six oh six, four, seven.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Your name and address for the record.
Are you calling on me?
Yes, Alex, thank you.
My name is Alex Pierceall. I live at 1840 North Levin in Chicago, and I'm the owner of 955 West Grant LLC.
Thank you. And Mr. Pierceall, do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great.
And last, but certainly not least, Mr. Talsma, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Mm-hmm, Chris Talsma, 1765 North Elston Avenue, Chicago, six oh six, four, two.
And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Awesome, thank you.
Dear Chairman and Commissioners, we come before you here today seeking a couple of variations which are required to permit the construction of a four-story lateral addition off the rear or the south end of the existing five-story school building, which such addition is necessary in order to allow for fullest simulation and operation of the Bennett Day School at the subject site. In other words, the plans that provide the basis for these variations comprise Phase Three of the build-out of a fully integrated campus for the school so that it may service children grades pre-kindergarten all the way through 12th. Phase One of which began over seven years ago. In this case, the school is quite literally growing with its students.
In this case, the school is quite literally growing with its students from the ground up. So that, as will be further described and was even more fully articulated in the findings of facts, from its inception, the project was intended to be completed in at least three phases. Phase one included the rehabilitation, renovation, and conversion of the existing building that you see on the slide above to allow for a school use for grades pre-K through fifth. Phase two included construction of a four-story lateral addition off the northwest corner of the building to allow for the expansion into the junior high. And phase three, which brings us here today, calls for construction of the new four-story lateral addition off the rear, the south end of the existing and expanded buildings. And again, that will be so that the school can start servicing the junior high and high school, so that it will be a fully integrated campus. Towards these very same ends, this same team has previously appeared before this honorable board back in May of two thousand and eighteen, seeking certain variations that were required in order to permit phase two of the build-out for the school, which such phase, again, called for the erection of a small four-story lateral addition off the west end of the existing landmarked building. The footprint of which such building was already non-conforming in terms of its setbacks. Those variations were granted by this board accordingly. As additional relevant background, the establishment of the school at this site has enjoyed a rather active history, procedurally and communally, which again, began back in two thousand and thirteen with our first community meeting to introduce the Bennett Day School to the residents and property owners within this vibrant River West community. As already explained, from its initiation, the school represented its multi-phased plan to the community with the final rendering shown here today, and those many seven years ago mirroring exactly what you have in front of you here today. So even seven years ago, the entire proposal was presented to the community, as well as in two thousand and eighteen, the entire proposal was provided as well to the board on that day for the variation, even though we were only able to permit one phase at that time. Accordingly, phase one of this proposal began with a zoning map amendment back in two thousand and thirteen, which was necessary to allow for the establishment of a school use within the existing five-story building that once operated as a group living residence, commonly known as the Chicago Settlement House. Which such building was originally constructed in the late eighteen hundreds and which was subsequently landmarked forever fixing its four corners in Chicago history. Once more, the architectural plans that were approved and ratified by full city council pursuant to a type-one zoning map amendment application back in two thousand and fourteen, and which have the full continued endorsement of Alderman Burnett and the neighbors of River West, are the same plans that provide the basis for the subject variations. In short, but yet long, we are attempting to close the loop on the permitting. Focusing now then on the subject variations in order to permit the construction of the four-story lateral addition, which will follow the long-established walls of the principal building straight back to the south. We are seeking a reduction in the required rear setback, which again is that south setback, from fifty feet to just over six feet, and to waive the single onsite loading berth requirement. With regard to the rear setback, I would like to note for the record that since the filing of the original application, the applicant's design team has made some minor functional tweaks to the programming, one of which includes actually slightly increasing the south setback from six feet represented in the denial to six point three one feet. As such, and towards this end, Mr. Chairman, this may be a good time for me to please note for the record that I already did communicate this to the staff, and it is reflected in the plans that are on the slides. But subsequent to the filing of the application, we did submit an updated revised set of plans to your staff, which are, which were prepared by Philorma, Philarama, Talsma Architects, and dated March eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. We would ask that those plans be adopted into the record and that any determinations made here today are made based on those plans. And again, just to be clear, there were no changes to the plans that modify or expand the relief that we are requesting here today. Most of it was interior reconfiguration of some rooms, couple extra basketball hoops, et cetera.
That's all good by us.
Okay, perfect. Towards this same end, the school programming and with regard to the loading berth, sorry, as well, and as it relates to the off-street loading requirements for the school building as expanded, the zoning ordinance requires a loading berth that is fifty feet in depth, as opposed to the typical twenty-five feet. And that is due to the overall size of the building, independent of its actual use. Towards the same end, the programming for the school already has a loading berth that is twenty-five feet in depth, which is, can be seen on the parking plan, which is on one of the slides. And yeah, so you can see at the rear of the parking area, there is a twenty-five-foot deep loading berth that already exists and that the school has been amply using, actively using for the last several years. So operationally speaking, because all of the deliveries for this school, which occur about once a week, are effectuated in vans and or small box trucks, they do not require that fifty-foot deep loading area, and as a result of of kind of waiving the fifty-foot deep one and keeping the twenty-five-foot deep one, they were able to accommodate some more parking, which is required for their employees. Shifting to hardships for which there are several, the design team has encountered and had to overcome a handful of topographical and practical obstacles in creating the programming for the new school at this site and around the existing improvements. Perhaps one of the most unique and daunting conditions affecting the subject property is the landmark designation of the original building located thereon, which such designation significantly limits and encumbers the applicant's use and enjoyment of the building, as well as any necessary or desired improvements to the same. Further frustrating matters is the fact that the originally constructed landmarked building is also non-conforming, as is with regard to its footprint, side and front setbacks in particular. Add to this the irregular shape of the subject site, which most significantly obscures the rear or again, south end of the site with just over thirty percent of the site measuring three hundred and one feet in depth, while the other just under seventy percent of the site is over a hundred and eighteen feet shorter. Then you are left with a perfect storm of design difficulties and hardships when attempting to develop programming for the activation and adaptive use of the subject property and improvements. So if we focus merely on the landmark designation and related physical restrictions and limitations, the only permissible way to expand the existing footprint and envelope of the building is to add on laterally to the side and to the rear at the same or less height of the originally constructed building, and that is because the landmark's ordinance specifically prohibits vertical additions to such buildings. As such, the school cannot grow up, it can only grow out, and again, that's frustrated by the irregular shape of the lot. Moreover, as the predecessors and one still active member of this honorable board observed back in two thousand and eighteen, simply attempting to improve the already non-conforming building at this site necessarily requires relief simply to make it compliant under the current standards. Even notwithstanding all of these restrictions and limitations caused by the truly unique conditions affecting this particular site, the school took conscious and deliberate considerations toward implementing a functional design that would have the least amount of even incidental or perceived impact on the two adjacent properties at the rear or again, south end of the site, while still remaining consistent with the character of the other improvements in the neighborhood. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I would be happy to introduce once more my witnesses, unless you have any direct areas that you would like, for which you would like me to focus.
No, Counselor, that would be great, and I think we can do a fairly streamlined, quick version of your witnesses.
I was gonna do that and then just open it up, please, to all of you for questions. With that, I'm just gonna get everyone on the record once more. We'll go again with Mr. Smith. If you can go back on the record, please?
Yes.
And Mr. Smith, again, you are a co-founder of the Bennett Day School as well as its chief executive officer, is that correct?
Yes, and the parent to second grader and a fifth grader.
Back to that, fifth grader was in the founding class way back in two thousand and fourteen, when the first, when the school first opened, is that true?
Correct.
So you're very vested in the school, is that correct?
That does it justice, yes.
Thank you. And towards that end, just for efficiency sake, Mr. Smith, prior to the hearing, you were given a copy of the applicant's findings of fact. If you were to continue to testify here today, would your testimony be consistent with the statements made in those findings?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Pierceall? Can you please, may you please go back on the record?
I do.
And once more, you are a managing member of the applicant, who is also the property owner of the subject site, is that true?
That is correct.
And you lease the existing improvements back to the Bennett Day School, is that right?
That is correct.
And yet, you are very actively involved in the build-out of the school and the permitting for the same, is that true?
Yes, I am.
And as well, you two have been personally involved in all of the community review for this many seven years to fully effectuate the school at your site, is that correct as well?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. And lastly, once more, you two were given a copy of findings of fact, as well as an affidavit prior to this hearing. If you were to continue to testify here today, would your testimony be consistent with the statements that were made therein?
Yes, it would.
Thank you. Lastly, Mr. Talsma, may you please go back on the record?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. And Mr. Talsma, you're a licensed architect in the state of Illinois, is that correct?
Yes.
And you were retained by the applicant and the Bennett Day School, again, about seven years ago to design the programming for their school at this site, is that true?
Correct.
And again, from seven years ago, the programming was just as we see it here today, is that right?
Yes.
And to you also were very personally involved in all of the community review for the last several years that have allowed us to be before this board here today, is that also correct?
That's right.
Thank you. And lastly, you two were given a copy of findings of fact, as well as an affidavit prior to this hearing. If you were to continue to testify here today, would your testimony be consistent with the statements that were made in those documents?
Yes, it would.
Thank you. And just very, very quickly, and lastly, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, although this isn't a typical revenue-based or revenue-driven project, we did provide the board, along with our findings of fact, as exhibit D, a pretty exhaustive financial feasibility that shows that all of the profits and or tuition that is obtained or that comes from the school goes right back into the school and actually back into the community. So with that, we would be very happy to answer any questions.
Okay, great. Any questions from the board?
I have a question. This is Commissioner Sanchez. Could you explain how the elimination of the loading berth is not going to increase congestion at the site?
And as I probably did not do justice explaining, we're not waiving for practical purposes. We're not completely waiving the loading berth. We have a loading berth. Our loading berth is only twenty-five feet deep. For a, again, it's on one of the slides, if Ms. Vazquez can again get the slide to the parking. Thank you so much. Commissioner Sanchez, I don't know how well you can see that, but there is a loading zone. I can't point to it because I don't have, oh, there you go. And there is a loading zone there. So that already exists, and I can put Mr. Smith back on the record as well. But it's my understanding that that is the loading zone that they use so that they effectuate all of their deliveries completely within the four corners of not just the site, but the building, so that there is absolutely no loading occurring or deliveries occurring on the public ways. And again, it's my further understanding that the school has about one delivery per week, and that's for food and supplies, and that that happens in a box truck, which very, very easily can circulate and access that twenty-five-foot deep loading zone. The loading zone we're asking, or sorry, the loading berth we're asking for to wave would be fifty feet deep, which is typically what you find with a semi-truck for like manufacturing and retail uses.
So as far as the, the school's concerned, the twenty-five-foot loading berth is sufficient for box trucks, and they don't anticipate needing anything bigger than box trucks?
Yeah, I'm gonna put Mr. Smith back on, since he's literally at the school every single day. Mr. Smith, can you once more go on the record and address Commissioner Sanchez's question?
Hi, Commissioner Sanchez, thanks for your question. Yes, that's right, I commute to schools with my children. But yeah, we get deliveries in a smaller truck, as Ms. Barnes mentioned. I mean, if anything, if ever we needed more stuff per week, we'd get a second delivery as opposed to bringing in a bigger truck.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any more questions from the board? Okay, sounds like we, it was a very, very comprehensive case, so thank you very much, and we will take this under consideration.
Much, and I'll see you in a little bit, again.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, let's move along. We're now going to matter one oh six dash twenty-one dash Z, which is at fourteen twenty-five North Astro, Astro Street. And I believe we have Kate Duncan as counselor on this, on this case, so Kate, whenever you're present, let me know.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Kate Duncan. I'm an attorney with offices located at seventy-one South Wacker Drive. I'm appearing this, this morning, or this afternoon, I guess now. I'm, along with Jack George, my partner, we're appearing on behalf of the applicants, Stephanie and John Harris, in connection with the proposed application for variations for the property at fourteen twenty-five North Astro Street. Can I, it's hard for me to see everyone, the way my screen works, so can I just verify that Mrs. Harris is on and my architect is on, and it's Jack?
Absolutely.
I see Stephanie, I see Doug.
Yeah, I see them as well, I think we're good.
So present this afternoon are the applicant Stephanie Harris and our architect, our architect Jeff Polakki. Mr. Chairman, would you like to go ahead and swear both of them in right now?
Yeah, sure, let's do that. Okay, so.
Mrs. Harris, can you please identify yourself and give us your name and your address for the record, please?
Yes, Stephanie Harris, one four two five North Astro Street.
Great, thank you, Ms. Harris. And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great.
Mr. Polakki, can you please identify your name and address, please?
My name's Jeff Kaliski, and I live at ten fifteen West Buena Avenue, Chicago, Illinois.
Thank you, Mr. Policki. And um, do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great. Okay, thank you. Um, the property that we're talking about today, fourteen twenty five North Astro Street currently contains a single family home. And Stephanie and John Harris are proposing to construct a garage and a rear one story enclosed walkway addition. That will connect the existing home to the new garage. Applicants are also uh, proposing to construct ten, ten and a half foot tall masonry walls adjacent to the garage. The property is located in an RS five residential district. In order to accomplish this project, Mr. and Mrs. Harris are requesting the following variations. Number one, to reduce the north side setback from four feet to zero feet and to reduce the south side setback from four to zero. For a total type side setback combination reduction from ten feet to zero. Number two, to reduce the rear setback from forty two point two nine feet to ten point seven five feet. And number three, to reduce the setback required from the rear property line to the proposed attached garage from two feet to point three feet. Mr. and Mrs. Harris are the owners of the property at fourteen twenty five North Astro Street and currently live in the home with their family. There is no existing garage on the property. Rather, one car is parked just outside of the rear masonry fence, which is ten and a half feet tall today. And uh, their other car, they do have a, they're two car family. Their other car is actually parked in a parking garage at fifteen fifteen North Astro Street, approximately a block from their home. Mr. and Mrs. Harris have an almost fifteen year old daughter and an eleven year old son, both of whom will soon be driving. The current parking conditions for the home, either, you know, parking um, either offsite down the block or in the alley on the other side of that masonry wall. Are not safe or desirable conditions for their family, nor is that safer desirable for Mrs. Harris or Mr. Harris. As a result, the Harrises are proposing to construct a garage on the property and also to attach the garage to the existing home. In addition to replacing the existing masonry fences to coordinate with the new garage in connection to the home. As detailed extensively in the affidavit submitted by Mrs. Harris, the Harris family has experienced multiple criminal incidents at their home and in their immediate block over the past several years. Shortly, I will ask Mrs. Harris to provide further detail on this, but the continued upward climb and crime at their home and in their neighborhood. Has been the trigger for the desire to create a safer condition for them, including being able to park both of their cars on the property as well as having a secure passage from the garage into their house. Uh, this really is the hardship for this case, the crime that the, that the Harris family has experienced. At their home and on their block has created serious concerns for the family, for their safety. And has caused the desire to not only construct a two car garage, but also to construct a connection between the house and the garage. Um, their backyard has actually been broken into several times over the last couple of years. Further, with respect to the placement of the proposed connection area as well as the taller masonry walls. The Harris family kept the proposed new construction within the boundaries of their existing fences and walls so that the additions do not appear any larger to their neighbors or different from the existing conditions. For example, the north wall, which is where the connector addition will be located, it's substantially similar in height to the existing masonry wall that, that uh, currently exists on the property. The east property boundary contains both the garage and a replacement masonry wall. This east replacement masonry wall is actually set back three feet further than it's currently located, further into the property than it's currently located. Um, but it remains the same height as the existing masonry wall. There's no wall proposed on the south side because the neighbors have an existing masonry wall, which is taller than any of the walls that are proposed by the Harris family. Uh, finally, the garage will only be uh, point three feet from the alley as opposed to the full two feet and, and that's only at its northernmost point. So a variation is needed. The rear property line is actually in a regular line. Some, most of the garage is actually set back two feet from the alley. The architects placed the garage accordingly so that it matches up and has a cohesive line with neighboring garages uh, in the alley. So today, along with the findings of fact we submitted, we included affidavits of Mrs. Harris and Mr. Policki, uh, who's our architect. Um, please note that Mr. and Mrs. Harris have spoken extensively with their neighbors surrounding the home. Both the neighbor on the north and on the south have given full support. Um, and Mr. and Mrs. Harris have also discussed the variations with the Gold Coast neighbors. And we have received a letter of support which has been provided to this board. As you know, Alderman Smith spoke earlier on behalf of the Harris family in, in support of the request that they've made. Um, so we believe that the proposed garage and the connector addition to the existing home is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. And I would like to now ask Mrs. Harris if she could be my first witness.
I'm here.
Great. Mrs. Harris, can you please state your name, spelling your last name for the record?
Stephanie Harris, H A R R I S.
And what's your address?
One four two five North Astro Street.
And are you familiar with the subject property?
Yes, I have lived here for more than a decade with my husband and my daughter who's soon to be fifteen and my eleven year old son.
And what are you proposing to do with the subject property?
Um, my husband and I are proposing to add a garage and a connection from the garage to the house.
Okay, and can you tell the board why you're proposing to add the garage and the connection from the house to the garage? Do you, do you currently have a garage?
No. No garage.
So where do you currently park your cars?
So currently, um, I park in a parking slab behind the house in the alley. And my husband parks a block down the street in a parking garage.
You use both of your cars every day, both of you?
We do. We use the cars every day.
And, and you submitted an affidavit in support of this case, correct, along with our findings effect?
Yes.
Okay, and in that affidavit, you detailed crime that you have experienced over the last several years, both directly at your home and also on your immediate block. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Mrs. Harris, I'd like for you to describe for the board the type of crime that you've experienced in, in some level of detail if the board doesn't mind her going into this. Because I think it's important for our case.
Is that okay?
Yep, go right ahead. Thank you.
Great. And um, obviously stop me anytime because it's written down so I wouldn't forget all the more. Um, in two thousand nine, the year that we moved into our house, uh, a man walking his dog was held up at gunpoint. From individuals that were hiding under the dumpster in front of our house right as we moved in. In August of two thousand eleven, the neighbors to our immediate south who've been really helpful and supportive in this process. Um, their entire garage was burglar, burglarized. Obviously, everything was taken. In October of two thousand thirteen, I was walking home um, from dinner at about eight o'clock at night with a friend. We were accosted by a man um, who chased us part of the way to a, a neighbor's house where we stayed for a while for safety. In two thousand fifteen, um, a man was mugged and badly beaten on Schiller Street, less than a block from our house. Um, my neighbor one block to the north had a man attempt to forcefully enter her home um, through the front door and. Um, in two thousand seventeen, um, uh, our backyard was breached by a man who got through our security gates and walked into the backyard. I was home alone and I confronted him and to my great relief, he um, ran from the yard. In two thousand eighteen, our backyard was breached again by him and, and this was the impetus for the need for this garage. In two thousand eighteen, our backyard was breached another time by a man who got through our security gates. And came into the backyard. The man tried to kick in our kitchen door. Um, our babysitter was home with our children and we called the police. And they came and they removed this individual. Um, over the past several years, I have witnessed multiple drug deals in our alley. The windows of my car have been smashed in on the parking pad. Um, our neighbors have had bricks thrown through their windows. Over the past several years, been multiple carjackings, um. Which I guess was detailed by Alderman Michelle Smith. Recently have been increase in carjackings in our neighborhood. One block from our house, a friend's son had a friend over and the son was carjacked leaving her home. Um, according to the Chicago Tribune, robberies have more than doubled in the last five years in the Gold Coast. Um, Officer O'Shea from the eighteenth district, which is my district. Stated that the highest target areas are those right off of Lake Shore Drive, which is uh, you know, right where we are. Um, according to Black Club Chicago, the eighteenth district, my district has experienced. Uh, a full doubling of carjackings in the last year. In two thousand twenty, the police warned the community after a string of robberies in the Gold Coast, including um. I guess there were three women robbed in the two hundred block of East Chestnut, among nine other robberies between December twenty fourth and January sixteenth. On January eighth, there were three robberies, um, Division Elm and Wells Streets in my neighborhood. In January twenty twenty, there was a Gold Coast community meeting with police to discuss the drastic increase in crime and specifically robberies. In February of two thousand twenty, there was a carjacking in the garage at fifteen hundred North Dearborn, Dearborn, two blocks from our house. In fourteen thirty, um, North Lake Shore Drive was hit with bullet gunfire. Uh, sorry, fourteen thirty, North Lake Shore Drive was hit with gunfire in two thousand twenty, uh, friend's apartment. In June twenty twenty, um, there was a robbery alert issued for the Gold Coast after a string of robberies. Uh, one was the first block of Scott Street in the afternoon. Then there was the four hundred block of North State. And the first block of Schiller where a woman was beaten and robbed on June fifth and that's, that's my block. That's the end of my block. In June uh, seventeenth, twenty twenty, a woman was mugged in the fourteen hundred um, block of North Lake Shore Drive, also my block. Um, on January thirteenth, twenty twenty one, five carjackings in my neighborhood in one day. One um, was two blocks away. At the fourteen hundred block of North Dearborn Parkway. Between February eleventh and March fourth, um, there have been three shootings targeting buildings on Lake Shore Drive. And in the past three weeks alone. Eleven hundred block of North Lake Shore Drive was struck by gunfire. When I get out of my car at night in the alley, I very often do not feel safe. I'm happy to be accompanied by my husband almost every time. As I go from the outside of my fence into my yard, um. I do look around. I don't feel safe. There are plenty of places for people to hide in our yard. Um, we have lived here for over a decade. The final incident of the breach of our backyard um. Was a game changer for us and we decided at that point that we needed to have a garage with a connector to our house. Before our children would be driving and entering the home alone. Um, I do worry for her sa- safety. I only have to get it wrong once. Um, if she had been in that yard in either of those incidences, I don't know how it would have turned out. And as a parent, I have no choice but to come before you and ask you for this. Um. And I guess that's sort of. It from that, but um, you know, it's a neighborhood. Everybody knows what's going on. Those were highlights that I can give you because they were also published in uh, the news. But it, it has changed. My neighborhood has gotten different in the last ten years. Um. Understandably, but as a parent, this is why I'm here, having lived in the house for a decade.
Uh, Mrs. Harris, is the reason you want to add the garage and the connection based on these incidents over the years?
One hundred percent. Um, with our, our daughter started driving school last week. Um, due to after school athletics, she will be driving on a very regular schedule to and from our house. Only in the evenings, only after dark. Um. Having her park on the slab outside of our existing fence, even have her, even, even having her park in the garage. That is not connected to our house, I consider from experience to be unsafe. Our backyard has been broken into multiple times that I referenced before. And I do not want my daughter um, to be compromised trying to get from her car into our home.
So does all of this crime create a hardship as a result of your physical surroundings as distinguished from just a mere inconvenience to you and your family?
Yes, and I will say that we lived here for a long time before deciding that this was one hundred percent a must.
So are you also working um, to follow the boundaries of the existing masonry fences and walls on your property? Was that something that was important to you?
Yes.
Okay, and will the proposed wall on the north property boundary be similar in scale to the existing wall that is on the property boundary right now?
Yes, right now we have a masonry garden wall that's approximately ten and a half feet tall. The wall for the connector addition is a little over nine feet, so it's very similar in scale. Um, we've talked to all of our neighbors at length um, to the north and they're fully supportive of this variation. Um, we have also talked with our neighbors to the south and they were highly supportive, um, wondering why it had taken us so long to pursue these. Improvements and further offering us additional suggestions to make the property more secure. They view this as a necessary addition to our home, um, just for the security of our family. In fact, they offered. Lots of tips on how to make the garage and connection to the house more secure. Um, specifically the ones to the south are the ones who had their garage broken into. And I believe that they are very grateful for the additional um, cameras and lighting that will be part of this project.
Mrs. Harris, can you describe the security measures that you're going to implement with the new garage and the connection to the house?
Yes, um, we'll be installing a security system that will include cameras and motion sensor lighting um, facing the alley and capturing all directions. We'll also be installing cameras inside the garage, um, and in the connection from the garage to the house. They'll all be divided in separate parts by keypads and alarm systems, motion sensors, glass breaks and panic buttons. They'll be secure locks um. From the garage into the hallway and then again from the hallway into the house, um, along with the panic, panic buttons.
Um, will the proposed wall on the east property boundary be similar in scale to the existing wall that's on the property line right now?
Yes, right now we have a masonry garden wall that's approximately ten and a half feet tall. We are um, proposing moving the garden wall three feet further west than it sits now, uh, further into our property boundary.
Under all of these conditions related to the variations, are they all due to unique circumstances? And did you create any of these conditions?
Um, yes, they're due to unique circumstances. Um, the crime in the existing building fence walls are not conditions that we created. And we believe that these are unique conditions facing our family and our property.
And are you requesting these variations in order to make more money out of the property?
No, um, we're planning to live in the house with our family and that's why we're requesting the variations.
Uh, if these variations are granted, will they alter the character of the neighborhood at all?
No, they'll very much conform to the characteristic of the neighborhood. Most of the homes on our block have garages. Um. Many of those homes have connections from the garages to the house. Um, further because we already have tall masonry walls in our property boundaries, the conditions will not be vis- visible, uh, visibly different than what already exists there now.
And will this building be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other properties in the neighborhood?
No.
Will this garage and connector addition impair light and air to adjacent properties?
No.
Will the proposed variations increase congestion or increase the danger of fire or endanger public safety or impair property values in the neighborhood?
No.
Will the variations, uh, the proposed variations be in accordance with all other laws of the city of Chicago? And, and also in accordance with all laws concerning public health, safety and welfare?
Yes.
And did you speak, you, we've talked, you spoke with your direct neighbors about this application and about your proposed construction? And did you also ta- talk with the Gold Coast neighbors?
Yes, I, we talked at length. Um, this has been a project long in the making and we've talked at length to all neighbors and um. The Gold Coast Neighborhood Association and they have all been incredibly supportive.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Harris. I don't have any further questions of you right now. Mr. Policki, can I ask you to come onto the record, please?
Yes.
Okay, can you please state your name, spelling your last name for the record?
Uh, Jeff Policki, P O L I C K Y.
And can you give us your property or your, your address, please, your business address?
Uh, business address is three seventy two West Ontario.
And what is your business or occupation?
Uh, I'm an architect at HBRA Architects.
And are you familiar with the application for variations that's the subject of this hearing?
Yes.
So directing your attention to the drawings that we've submitted and that are up on the screen. Can you please describe for the board the manner in which the subject property is proposed to be improved?
Uh, the applicants proposing to construct a new two car garage along with a small connection addition from the new garage, garage to the house. Um, they're also proposing to replace portions of the existing masonry fence that, so that all the new construction is cohesive.
Can you detail the relief that's needed in accordance with your drawings?
Uh, to construct the garage and the connection addition, uh, the applicants need a north side setback and south side setback and combined side setback all to zero. The applicants also need a rear setback variation from forty two point two nine feet to ten point seven five feet. And finally, the rear property line is angled and so portion of the garage is only point three feet from the property line instead of the required two feet. Most of the recor- uh, the garage is actually set back the required two feet.
So when designing the garage and the addition, were you focused on following the existing conditions so not to increase the extent of any approachments into the neighborhood?
Yes, we propose a taller than average masonry fence on the east side of the property. However, uh, the proposed fence matches the existing fence height and materials, which is uh, currently three feet further to the east and closer to the alley.
So when de- when designing the garage, were you constrained to some extent by the angled east property boundary?
Uh, yes, while the bulk of the garage is set back two feet from the property boundary, a small portion of it is just within point three feet of the, the property boundary. The placement of the garage is located directly on top of the existing masonry garden wall. So this was done to minimize any change to the character of the neighborhood from the alley and maintain the typical relationship of garages on the block to the alley.
When designing the addition in the garage, did the Harris? Uh, when designing the addition in the garage, did the Harris's talk to you about the crime in the neighborhood?
Yes, uh, it's always been the main concern in the driving force for building the garage.
All of these conditions, the crime, the angled east property boundary, and the attempt to recreate existing conditions. Create a hardship as distinguished from a mere inconvenience for the, for the property and the property owners?
Yes, the hardship first and foremost is that we're trying to create a safe condition for the Harris family. Uh, they're concerned about the safety and for not only themselves, but for their children as they become able to drive and have a little more independence. Additionally, we have attempted to create a condition that does not change the character of the neighborhood, but rather matches the existing conditions.
So do you believe, and is it your professional opinion, that this garage and connection addition will impede an adequate supply of light and air for any of the neighbors adjacent to the Harris's home?
Uh, no, we believe that since we are constructing the new additions in such a way that we're matching the existing conditions. The light and air for the neighbors adjacent to the Harris's home will not be impacted.
Will the garage and its design promote pedestrian safety and comfort?
Yes.
Is the proposed garage and connector addition compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of site planning, building scale, and project design?
Yes, uh, in my professional opinion, the garage in addition is compatible with the surrounding area.
Mister Chairman, I don't have any further questions of our witnesses, but we are here to answer questions for the, from the board.
Great, yeah, and thank you, um, very much, everyone, so, um. Before we get started, I'll say we're packing a lot of different things into one variation, which of course is totally fine. I think we might just try to unpack because some of the requests, um, you know, are historically a bit more controversial with this board than others. Um, so with that, I think the board will have some questions, so I'll, I'll actually start with them, if, uh, other members of the board have any questions.
Hi, this is Jolene Saul, I have a few, um. For the, the various variations, can you address, um, if there's a difference? Which are tied to only the garage, and then which are tied to the connector between the garage and the house?
Um, okay, so. Uh, they're all sort of tied together, um, I would say the reduction of the north and the south, the north setback. And the overall combined are tied to the connector. The reduction on the south side is tied to that masonry wall that we're doing. Um, and then the reduction from the rear property line to the alley is tied solely to the garage.
And the, um. Alright, so the, the work on the south is to match the new construction, is that what's happening?
Correct, that's correct, we're replacing the existing masonry wall so that it, it is cohesive with the new construction of the garage and the, the passageway area.
And then on the north, does the connector run along the property line, or is it?
It does, yes, it sits, and it actually matches, uh, the, the boundary of it sits in the exact location that the existing masonry wall is located.
And I'm assuming the answer is yes, but, um. I guess south of the garage along the alley, there is a wall there, correct?
Correct, that's correct, there is a, there is an existing wall and there will be a replacement wall.
So, um, can you speak to what? Um, you know, it seems like the, the property then is kind of walled in on all sides, so can someone address the added security value of the connector?
Yes, uh, you know, I think as Mrs. Harris detailed, her yard has been breached several times. And, um, so if they only had the garage without the connector, there would still be the risk of there being. Passage from the garage into the house through the yard where their yard has been breached. And so I think the connector is really the driving, is really the driver of the requests for the variations. And really the driver of the request for their safety, because without the connection, they still have the risk of yard between the house and the garage. Where they have found two intruders in the past, in, in the recent past.
Okay, I might have more questions on that, but I do have, um, a question on the hardship issue now, so, um. What I've heard is that crime is the hardship here, which of course no one wants crime in their neighborhood, but. Could also argue that's more of a neighborhood or even citywide issue. Can you speak to the hardship to the, the hardship of the property in it, uh, in particular? And not kind of like a more neighborhood issue, like what about the property, uh, would justify these variations?
So I think that the property, so that family is living at the property and the conditions in the neighborhood have devolved over the last several years. They, um, as Mrs. Harris testified, there's been an uptick in crime, and I know that we also included some, um, in the findings of fact, we included a report from the alderman. Where she has had recent community meetings on the uptick in crime. So I understand, um, Commissioner Saul, that you're asking, you know, what's the actual physical condition with the property itself? But it really is the condition and the physical conditions of the neighborhood and the, in the community that they're living in at the moment. Um, so I think that in the fact that they've had their, their house breached several times and that their neighbors have had these conditions happen too. Is leading to the concern for the safety of their family. And so the, the conditions in the neighborhood have, have created a hardship for this property. In that they don't have safety when they're trying to get from their, from their proposed garage into their house.
Uh, so I just want to clarify, it's nothing with the specific property that poses a hardship.
There is, there is nothing with the physical condition of the actual lot on which it sits that's propos- that's, well. Um, but for the angled rear property boundary, which is creating a bit of a problem with the placement of the garage. Uh, and its distance away from the alley.
Can I add one thing?
Sure.
Which is the people that entered the yard didn't have to open the fence to get in. So somehow the condition of the property is such that people are able to enter our yard. Even with a closed, I believe, six-and-a-half-foot fence in the front and the wall that is in the back.
Is. Um, so, and, you know, I'm, I'm sensitive to, to your concerns, is that a security issue though, or like a lot issue?
Well, I think it's this house and the way it's situated in the neighborhood and on the lot, I do think all of that together is working against them. I think that it's creating a hardship for their safety and, and their security on the lot.
Uh, and, and just, and sorry, Jolene, to, to budge in, but I think it's important, counselor, that we show a hardship to the property. Um, because as you know, that's, that's kind of how we require hardship in these matters, it's a hardship to the property because there's an issue. With us, and I understand how, um, crime does indirectly create hardship on some of these requests. But if we indirectly, um, or if we as a blanket were to accept crime as a hardship. Everyone in the, you know, the zip code then has a, a hardship precedent to come back to and, and say, uh, you know. We view, we view general crime as a hardship, so to the best you can, I, I, it would be helpful for us if you can fine tune this to property hardship.
So this particular property, I understand what you're saying, Mister, Mister Commissioner. This particular property is situated on the lot, in the, the existing home is situated in such a way. That it makes it very, it's been, it's obviously been very easy for the yard to be breached. The way that the existing fences and the way that the, the existing home lies on the property has made it very easy for this yard to be breached. I think, uh, other homes may have different conditions that are along this block or along, in this neighborhood. They may have different ba- boundaries and garden walls and fences that secure their property. The way that the existing home sits on this lot, the way that the existing fences sit on the lot, have made it very difficult for this, for the Harris's to secure the property. In, in fact, it has made it impossible for them to secure the property. And so I do think that the physical con- conditions of this particular property are making it difficult for the Harris's to have security on the property.
Uh, Jolene Saul again, can you, um, I don't know, can you? You've said a couple of times the way the, the, the house is positioned on the lot, can you? Um, be more detailed, what about that is leading to?
So, sure, yes, yes, Commissioner Saul, um, so the, the home, um, when you go from the rear, if you're coming in, if you're coming into the home from the alley. There's a wall, but that wall has been, um, there's no garage, so there's no door to get, there's one, one, actually, can you show the photograph? Ms. Vasquez, can you sh- Vasquez, can you show the photograph of the? Yeah, so you can see that there's a wall and a door that's back there, but there are also dumpsters that line that back there. So I feel like it's been an easy condition for, um, people to be able to get over the garden wall. Um, so that has now been a secure condition for the, the Harris's. Um, and then in the front, there is a, there's a gangway, I guess, between the house to the south and the Harris's house. And there's a, a lower gate that goes between the two homes, I don't believe there's a photograph of this unfortunately. There's a lower, yeah, well, there we go, from the house to the front, um, on the front. So there's a gangway there, and there's a lower fence that they have that's about midway down that gangway. And that's another location that I think has been breached, or if, if, and, and I don't know, Mrs. Harris, maybe you can speak for a minute about the condition that's between the, your house and your house to the south?
That, that's really been a main part of the problem, that seems to be pretty easily scalable. And it's immediate access to the backyard, where the majority of the houses on our block are lot line to lot line. And mi- and I believe the majority also pretty much have connected garages, I'd need to look at the overhead picture you all had. Um, and that is what makes our house different than the other ones, you can see it on the alley. Um, yeah, you can see there that it's a lot of lot line to lot line and going all the way back. And they, that has made it, I know that ours is the only one that has this kind of yard, and it's the connector to the front. Um, that has been easily breached. Um, I'm not sure how the first person got in, I don't know if they came in over the back wall or the front gate. I know the second person just scaled over that gate and came along the gangway into the backyard. And that is not typical conditions of our, of our, um, block.
Uh, can I also add, uh, you can see fairly well in the image inside the alley looking to the north. The majority of these homes have garages or existing coach houses that do span mostly from side, side, uh, property line to side property line. There are very few with fences that are scalable in the area, and I think that's part of a main reason why this is, this property is a, um, a target along this alleyway. Um, you know, using current codes, there's no way we could, uh, make a garage that extends from side lot to side lot. Um, so to, to help create a similar condition to what these neighbors have, that's why we were proposing the connector.
This is Commissioner Esposito, it's unclear to me why the two-foot rear setback requirement needs to be violated for this garage, can you explain?
So there, we're trying to keep a consistent, first of all, we're trying to match the existing garden wall. So we're trying to use footings that are already in place from the existing garden wall when we construct the garage. Mister Policki, can you maybe talk a little bit more about that, please?
Uh, I can, uh, so the, the footings wouldn't be reused, uh, what the attempt was, was to, uh, use the exact same location to maintain the, the, uh. Um, character of the alley and its relationship to the alley.
So it's not really necessary?
Well, i- in order to maintain the, the cohesive look of what we're proposing with the, to, to not change the character of how this is looking to the neighbors. That's why we've proposed it where we have, and as we said, a majority of the garage sits within that two-foot setback, it's just the corner that really extends out over it. Because of the angled nature of the line.
I noticed that it appears that your neighboring, uh, your neighbor's roof. On their garage has some sort of deck that appears to be fenced in, what is the plan for the roof of this garage?
Jeff, will you speak to that as well?
Uh, there, there is no roof deck proposed for this garage.
And how can you describe the roof itself?
Um, a standard masonry parapet and a, um, a typical low-slope roof.
Uh, of what surface?
Um, I, I don't believe we've finalized that, it's likely E P D M or some similar material.
And can you explain what E P D M is, please?
I can. Um, it's a, a synthetic rubber material, it's a membrane roof. Um, so it will be, you know, a thin membrane within the parapet of this masonry.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, this is Jolene Saul again, so I was trying to, um. Clean it from the plans, but I'm gonna just ask, so since it, it seems like the front of that house in that gangway. Is at least one of the security issues, what, what, what is being done to that condition as part of this proposed work?
So there's no change proposed for that gate that's along the front. Rather, in order to secure the yard, it, that's why the connector is proposed, to go from the garage into the home. To make sure that as you're going from the garage into the home, you're secure. I don't think, I don't think the Harris's believe that there's any way that they can wall this up so that no one could ever possibly get into their backyard. But I think that they just want to make sure that they're safe when they go from their garage into their home.
Good question, question on, um, on the connector, um, when we say. We're anticipating a new masonry wall that matches the existing non-conforming masonry wall's height. Is that new mason reali- m- masonry wall really the con- the connector, just the side of it?
Correct.
Okay. And. To do that. One second, sorry, uh, stay with me, uh, to do that, the old masonry wall needs to come down, right? There's no way to just expand the old masonry wall into the structure?
Jeff, can you speak to that?
Uh, yes, to, to be able to support the, the roofing for this space, um, the current wall is just a two-wide brick wall. We need to thicken it up to three wides to be able to allow, um, support of the roof. So we will have to replace that wall.
Okay, okay, um, okay, I'm just trying to make a, a logical jump because. I, I, I clearly see a hardship of not having a garage, and this is just me speaking, this is me personally speaking, I see the, the garage hardship. Um, because the masonry wall in existence is. In existence, non-conforming, um, you know, but compliant historically. Um, it's tricky for us to do a whole new masonry wall on top of the connector issue, but, and that's because we. Um, as I know this is, you, you know this, counselor, but we have, uh, we usually stick by a standard of. Six-foot masonry walls in the city of Chicago with the additional option to add two feet, so long as that two feet is, um, like sixty percent opaque. Um. So I'm having. A hard time seeing, um, the connector, the argument for the connector. And I know that was more of me thinking out loud, but if you could address anything I just said, it would be helpful for me.
Um, so I think it's different, I mean, I think thinking about it as a connector versus a masonry wall, it's a really an addition between the house and the garage. So it's not a replacement of the existing masonry wall or like a new fence, it really is a connector between the house and the garage. So, a- and unfortunately, as, um, the architect has stated, they cannot retain the existing masonry wall. Because it really is just a fence, it's not meant to be a wall for a, for a structure. Um, and so that's the reason that they have to replace it. Now, when you go onto the, if you're in the, in the property owner to the north of us, if you, if you're in their yard and you look at the wall. It's gonna look the same to you, whether it's a, it's a, a brick fence, or whether it's a, you know, part of the structure that's now connecting the house to the, to the garage.
Okay, I got it, yep, thank you. Additional questions from the board? I guess one question I have, just as we all keep this in mind, because we are, you know, trying to bridge, um, you know, bridge a few different hardship arguments here. Um, and this, this question goes directly to Ms. Harris, what other security precautions, uh, have you taken? I know there, there, there were a few listed in your finding of fact, um, but I'm hoping you can just summarize additional security precautions on the building.
So we, after the first person entered the yard, we don't, again, we didn't know if they, it was important to try to figure out how they got in. So we've added since that first time, motion sensor lighting and cameras for the yard. We, at that point, I thought, well, you know, at least it'll be a deterrent, right? Because we have a fence, I mean, if you all would let us build a bigger fence, I mean, that's, that front fence, yeah, I mean, I would frankly make it as high as someone would let me, but that, I believe it's as high as we are allowed. And, and so we, so what we could do at that point was put in very visible lighting and cameras in hopes of being a deterrent. And the problem for us was when that didn't work and somebody else entered the yard and attempted to kick in the door, it didn't work, you know, what we thought would work didn't work. And so that is why, yes, do you want to know more about the security system for the addition of the garage? Or do you want to, I was thinking, you were thinking, what did we do after the first break-in kind of thing?
Yeah, no, that's helpful. That's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm looking for. So, yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just point out something that's important to this property, too, is that it is a contributing building in a landmark district. And so for us to be able to put a different fence in the front is very difficult because we would need to go before the Landmarks Commission to change anything that would impact the look of the front of that building.
Sure, sure. And to be fair, too, from, from our perspective, you know, a higher masonry wall, which is really the connector, is an easier sell, at least to me, when it's on the side of the building adjacent to the neighbors rather than the front of the building adjacent to the public or the back. So I hear you on that.
Thank you.
Additional questions from the board? Okay, I think, I think we're good. I think we have a lot of information on this. So thank you, everyone, for your time and for answering our questions, and enjoy the weekend.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, all commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, we are going to take a thirty-minute lunch break. So I'm going to call a motion for recess. We will regather here at 1:45 PM. Commissioner Poya, seconds, Commissioner Saul. Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
Great, and then we will reconvene at 1:45 PM. Thank you, everyone.